We'll call the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board to order. This is our regular meeting. Um, well, okay, let's rise and pledge.
Yeah, here we are. We just got it. It's like baseball.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
One nation, under God.
We have a mostly all here Select Board tonight. Joe DiNardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Geddy, and Sharon Russell. Um, and we have a few folks on the Zoom call, and we have a few folks in here. Uh, let's start through the top part of the agenda. We have minutes for the January 28th Select Board meeting. In your packet, is there any motion?
Move to approve this.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes as printed. Any discussion?
I have one comment bottom of page three.
Yep.
So the sentence is there's a large amount of town people who fall under the definition of official. And I'm thinking maybe that sentence should be filled out with who need to receive training. Think maybe that was the gist of that.
Okay.
Discussion.
We'll add who need to receive training. Okay. Anything you all, everybody good with that? Anything else? If not, motion's made and seconded, all in favor of approving the minutes as adopted, is amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, there we go. All right, do we have any board member announcements?
I have one.
Okay.
And I want to thank Bill for coming in on Friday morning and Bale and Dave and I and Kerry out when the computer didn't want to do what it was supposed to do. He was supposed to be on, but he came in and got us up and running and hopefully you made where you had to go in time. And I thanks a lot, Bill, for doing it.
Good, thanks, Bill. Any other board member announcements? Um, I have one piece of cor- well, I have two pieces of correspondence. One comes under what I mentioned earlier. The other is Tina Keshava, Rutland Town School Board, wrote to me and said, "The school board was wondering if there was any way we could go first on Monday night." Uh, this is for the pre, the town meeting, the night before town voting. "As you may have heard, we are showing an adjusted tax rate decrease this year and do not believe there will be much discussion needed. Plus, for those that plan to attend for your portion, it would be good for them to hear from us. We had only three people stay for the pre, for part of the pre-town meeting. I fear we may have the same or less if we follow the Select Board's presentation."
What are they offering?
Um.
Be brief.
My, my reaction was we alternate, you know? We alternate for this very reason, so no group.
So I think we should stick to that.
I'm okay with that. And frankly, you know, last year when we waited for them, we were the ones with the smaller budget or, you know. So it, this happens. What do you want to do?
I make a motion that we stay as is. It's always worked.
The alternating?
Yep.
And this is?
Yep.
The year the Select Board goes first. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion? I'll phrase it nicely, but.
Yeah, I mean.
This seems to have worked. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So we're going to stick with our schedule.
All right.
Okay, that is what I have. Are there questions from the floor, public comments, folks who are not otherwise on our agenda? Okay.
Town amended, yeah, okay. So we will then go to Megan Smith and Fred Bagley, Town amended.
Thank you.
Yeah, I let you get settled in first, but could you please come up here and have a seat?
Absolutely.
Okay, these folks are from the Town of Mendon Select Board, our colleagues. And I will say that we, I had Bill dig out the minutes from the meeting when Town Amendment was previously in to talk about.
Yes, and we were not aware of that, so.
You have to refresh our memory.
Oh, yeah. Um, that was my predecessor, I believe.
Yeah, it was.
So.
We were waiting for the results of a scoping study. It's, and we were, here it is. Um, this is November 21st, 2023. Larry Corcel came, as did Valerie Taylor, and it was about speed limits, and we share the same stretch of road that you had concerns about. They're asking for help from the town to coordinate efforts in reducing posted speed limits from the town line at Home Depot through Mendon to the Killington Town Line. There have been a number of fatalities on the Mendon section of US Route 4. Mendon has a scoping study currently being done, and the board, that would, that would be us, asked them to follow up once it is complete, so coordination can be discussed with the data available. So that's what we had.
Well, that's great to know because we, um, we weren't aware of that. But, um, so I'm Megan Smith. I'm chair of the Mendon Select Board. This is Fred Bagley, who chairs our Route 4.
Study committee.
Study, great. So we had Mendon on the move, which was our Vermont Council of Rural Development Study on our town, and one of the committees was a safety committee about Route 4. So Fred is just going to share with you what we've learned through the scoping study and what we're looking to do in the future.
So this, the Town Amendment got a grant from the state, from VTrans to do this scoping study. Um, it was completed last summer. We've been trying to implement various parts of it. A lot of it has to do with pedestrian safety, crosswalks, uh, improving safety up at the Appalachian Trail Crossing, issues like that, that are not speed limit directed per se. But a big component of the, the engineering study done was traffic calming, especially in our village district. And traffic calming can be speed reduction, but it can be also things by the engineers' report, by restriping and changing merging lanes and changing how much, how many access points there are. All these things were, um, uh, can help to calm traffic. And for those of you who've driven Route 4 from New York to Vermont, with the exception of the four lane out here, you know, 4A, if you drive from 4A into your town and then all the way to New Hampshire, there's only one village in that entire dis- entire length across the state where the speed limit is 45 within a designated village center, and that happens to be us. So we are, uh, trying to develop the case to VTrans that our speed limit as part of this overall pedestrian traffic calming process, that our speed limit should be reduced to 40. Um, we have six miles of Route 4 going up towards the mountain. A big chunk of it, of course, is very rural. Once you make that turn past our little downtown, but within our downtown district, we hope to convince VTrans to reduce it to 40. We have 10 commercial businesses in a very short stretch of road. Um, we have traffic, uh, crash data from the state showing this little highlighted area here. That's our little downtown and all those little black dots are, you can see in the entire six mile stretch of Route 4, that there's an awful lot of black dots right there in this 10-year, uh, study of crash data from VTrans. But, um, it would enhance our application to VTrans to reduce speeds from 45 to 40 in our village district if we could coordinate with Rutland Town to have them, you can all consider joining the application to reduce it from 45 to 40 in the mile and a quarter from essentially Home Depot up to Town Line Road. Um, I don't, uh, pretend to know, and Chief Thomas, I'm sure is a better source than I, as to how much you all worry about speeding, um, in your mile and a quarter of Route 4 leading up to or down from our town. But here is somewhat comparable crash data. Or here's the VTrans crash data for your mile and a quarter of Route 4. And, uh, I, I, I can't pretend to explain all these little dots. You'll see in the, in the, down at the bottom, that the red dots are where there's an injury in this 10-year period. The others who are property damaged, I assume that means vehicles only. And I can't pretend to tell you in all of these incidents whether speed per se was an issue, but I'm guessing.
Right at the top of the west.
Based on our town that it played a role, along with distracted driving, et cetera, et cetera. So.
This is for a 10-year period?
Yes, this is from 15 to 25, uh, I assume.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah, this is data that was pulled together for, uh, at our request by, uh, the traffic consultant that reached from planning. So it's, I don't know if it's through January of 25 or yesterday, but, um, so there are 43 dots in your mile and a quarter of Route 4. In our six miles of Route 4, because we're, you know, you get beyond the congested parts, um, we have something like 60 dots in our six miles. So the, the whole mile and a quarter stretch in Rutland Town leading to roughly a mile and a quarter of Mendon before it becomes rural going up the mountain is obviously a pretty high crash data scene. Um, and so we are initiating, the Select Board has to do it, but we're initiating the process with the help of the RRPC traffic consultant, um, of making the application to VTrans to reduce the speed from 45 to 40. In addition to the, the safety aspects, again, I can't pretend to, and I won't pretend to dissect each of these dots along the way here. Uh, but in addition to, um, whatever role speed played in, in the crashes, our merchants in our stretch of Route 4 in our little downtown are convinced that it would enhance their commercial access, viability, safety, safety of their employees, the public coming by and noticing it's they actually have time to stop and make a turn into this business or that business if it were a slower speed. Goes to heavy lift, um, it's a federal highway. VTrans is not going to, um, and VTrans has lots of responsibilities, one of which is to get people from here to there expeditiously. And, um, we just, we think that taking an extra 24 seconds to drive through our part of Route 4 is worth it if we can get down to 40 miles an hour. So we would just invite, we, we'd hope to invite you or, um, a member or appoint a group or whatever to work with us to, um, if possible, file a joint application. Uh, we're going to proceed with an application regardless, but we invite your participation.
Questions?
So you're looking to just change the speed limit from the Rutland Town Mendon line up past Sugar and Spice roughly, and then the rest of the way up the mountain, it'll still be the 50?
Yeah.
It's just that section in that, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't turn to 50 till after.
Turns to 50, right.
Right where the road goes to two lanes up the hill.
Yes, where there's, we have a little, what we call Medway Road across the bridge there. That's where it turns 50. In your town, it goes from 35 at, um.
Home Depot. 35 up to about.
It's about 200 yards uphill, actually, is where the first 45 mile an hour sign is.
So the 50 mile an hour zone would still be in the same place, or are you going to lower that as well?
The state has indicated very clearly they have no interest in reducing the 50-mile zone, but further up the hill, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have no interest.
Even though we had.
To me, that's where it gets more dangerous.
And that's where we've had fatalities.
Our engineer, yeah, we had six fatalities in the summer of '23, but knock on wood, none in 20, well, none in '24, knock on wood, '25 stays the same. Our traffic consultants from the private engineering firm that did the study, the scoping study for the state have lots of other suggestions about merging climbing lanes, narrowing the, the travel lanes, narrowing the shoulder, make it seem like it should be a slower road and not a freeway, uh, going up there. I, I will just highlight one other issue. When you drive through your stretch of Route 4 and then into our stretch of Route 4 coming uphill, there's a merge lane right before Town Line Road roughly. Um, and in that circumstance, the passing cars are required to merge with the slower right-hand lane after Town Line Road at, um, at the Husi Watts Pit, Casella Pit.
Casella.
There's another uphill travel lane, but the merge lane on that end is just the opposite.
Yeah.
The slower cars are required to merge with the passing cars, which had, we don't know which one is better. We think it's highly confusing to the traveling public to have different ways of merging in such a short distance. And our merchants, our, our merchants in that little stretch of our, our stretch of Route 4 see cars in the passing, the pass lane having to speed up to join the traffic in the passing lane, therefore increasing the speed and the.
I almost wonder, in that little section there from Casella's pit up, man, they do it for slower traffic, but it's only that slow grade by the orchard. After that, it's pretty level to get around the corner, you know?
You're.
If you actually had a left-hand turn lane in just one lane, like the city did, that would keep everybody more in line.
It gets.
And it would allow, so when somebody wants to make a left turn lane, you're not coming upon somebody stopped to turn left. But I don't know if the.
No, you, you've hit a, the same point that our engineers pointed out, is that the length of the merge lane in our town, I, we don't have a scoping study for your town, the length of the merge lane in our town is longer than the federal highway standards require by about, uh, 100 yards. So our, the engineers who do our scoping study are hoping to convince the state that when they repave and, and restripe that stretch of Route 4, that they will shorten the length of the merge lanes. That would slow traffic because you don't have as far to speed up to get in front of somebody. You have to slow down to do it. Well, we're also hoping we can convince them, whichever one is right, your version where the, this guy, these guys have to merge, or our version where these guys have to merge, we're just hoping the state will make it the same in both.
Right. So, you know, like in Rutland Town, we have that issue at Home Depot. That used to be two lanes all the way eastbound. And I don't know how many years ago, the state changed that intersection so that it became one lane there for about 100 yards.
Yeah.
And you go through the intersection and it goes back to two. So the impatient drivers get into that left lane and then they just.
And, and we have folks, because I do it, traveling up there to turn to go to Northwood.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's a bad turn. And then just beyond that is.
You're making a left turn in the passing lane.
Medical complex up there that we travel to a lot, and you also have to make a turn across traffic. So I.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I guess we're hoping that we can get someone, maybe just one person designated from your town to work with our committee as we move forward with this. But, you know, just speaking also of that road, we, you know, with the high traffic going up to Mountain Top now with, that's so busy now that coming out there, that's another real, with Sugar and Spice and the miniature golf, you know, it's.
There's a lot going on.
It's ugly.
Unfortunately, for a, for a center turning lane, once you get, uh, into the area where our little coffee shop is, Apollo's Coffee and across from that, or that the right of, this, the state right of way is literally on the building's front doorstep.
Yeah.
So there's no room for turning lanes there. But we can, we think the state can help us make progress if they would shorten the merge lane that automatically. And also the, the travel lanes, if, if we've had one of our members, you know, walk it with a tape measure, liter- tape measure literally, and the travel lane varies from 14 to 11 feet as it wanders through our town. The, um, the town is, the Route 4 is currently on the state paving schedule to be repaved in 2029, uh, through our town. I assume that's, includes your stretch, uh, which means the engineering and all that sort of stuff would be done in 2028. The current state paving schedule stays the same, but we're currently on, on their docket for four summers from now.
Dave, do we know? Okay.
And, um, so that we, we're trying to get our merchants and our ducks in a row. So when they get around to reengineering, and they won't, when they restripe it next summer, they'll just put the stripes where the current stripes are. But if we want them to do a major restriping, which requires engineering and surveys, we have to get on their docket well in advance. So by 2028, they do all those studies. So when they do it in '29, maybe it'll be different.
Um.
So anyway, we just invite your participation.
We did cooperate with the city of Rutland when we tried to get the speed limit reduced from 45 to 40 on South Main Street, and we approached the state transportation folks. And, um, we did a joint effort, but they weren't buying it. So I know it's going to be a haul. Um, but I also, I personally think it's a good idea.
So do I. You ever try getting out of Greenbrier? That's scary as heck.
About everything, really, on that road.
It is, because there's just.
Seven north to.
I live right near Sugar and Spice.
And the one thing that we didn't do that Mendon did, we didn't do the traffic study.
The traffic study.
So we had no data to go to the state and say, this is why we want to reduce, um, traffic speeds coming into Rutland Town.
This is a start.
Yeah, that's leaving that way. But we tried to do this on Route 7 and, and what Mary said.
As well as south.
And they just turned us down. But we didn't have any, we were just requesting this because, um, the city was seeing traffic coming down Route 7. You know, the speed limit is posted at 50. The rule of thumb is everybody drives 10 miles an hour. So you've got traffic entering Rutland Town at 60 miles an hour. They're supposed to drop to 40, but they dropped to maybe 50. You get up by Noble Hardware and it's supposed to be 35, but we're still doing 45 or 50. And we didn't have anything to back that up, so we didn't get anywhere. Now we're seeing the reverse problem since they redid Route 7. People, the frustrated ones that are leaving the city headed north, our, um, our town constable that's out there, he said he could stay all day at Mill, uh, Post Road, McKinley Avenue, just one right after another. Nobody, you know, they're just flying up through there. So.
We think, we think we'll.
I think with the traffic study, you guys are one step ahead of what we tried to do because you've got something to back up what you're trying to ask for.
We, we didn't do a speed study as part of our engineering scoping study, but, um, as part of the application process, a speed study will be done, hopefully paid for by the state, not by us.
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting that.
Let, let me go to Matt because he was, he, yeah.
I'm just curious if the chief has any thoughts on any of this.
I think what Joe says, it's true. Uh, it wouldn't hurt the, oh, the speed limit to 40 miles an hour, we, that would be, 24 seconds.
And you know what? They're not going to drive the speed limit. If they were driving 45, you wouldn't have the problems you got now.
Well, we got, we got 40 miles over to West Strut and 40 miles an hour and I, you know.
Yeah.
So, so it sounds like we have enough folks who want to move forward. Matt, you okay with that? Do, do we want to do a vote to, um, um, send a delegate to work with the Town Amendment to reduce the speed?
Yeah, I nominate Joey. He seems to feel better.
Okay, motion's been made to nominate Joe DiNardo to work, on behalf of the Select Board, to work with the Town of Mendon to reduce.
So I want to tell you, Sharon, I was gonna.
Are you going to second the motion?
No, I was gonna ask you to do it.
Good.
One way or the other.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Debate.
Oh, no, my only point is, would this position be whether I'm a board member or not?
And, and I'm not a board.
He's not a board member.
I'm not a board member.
Okay. I mean, if, if I don't get reelected on March 4th.
Oh.
I will still do this.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Great.
See, that's why I nominated him. I knew you'd be good, Joe.
Good, yes.
I, I can't complain about speed limits on Grove Street and the way people drive and not try to do something to help you guys out.
What scares me is watching people walk in the fall and the cars are just zipping.
I know, they're bad.
So are we voting to, uh, join with Mendon or are we voting to?
We're voting to send you to work with Mendon to.
So that means we're, but we.
A joint venture to reduce the speed limit on.
All right.
Route 4 from 45 to 40.
Yep.
That's the whole motion. Didn't you hear that, Bill? Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Mr. DiNardo, do you have a card or something? Can I get your contact or I can get it?
You can get it all from Bill.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Drive safely.
We literally, we were on, right in front of, was it Wendy's? And this guy walked in front of us almost, I mean.
Yeah, going from, right across from Grand Union to Wendy's in dark jacket, dark pants.
So, so you do realize.
Supposed to hit him.
So am I not right, Eddie, that they're trying to get hit? That's my opinion. People crossing the road are trying to get hit. They're, they're looking for a lawsuit and a free ride. Because anybody that values your life, you wear something reflective or you don't cross six lanes of traffic at night in the dark.
That would be highly ironic to not make this meeting, that I was.
Yeah.
walking the traffic.
That, that wouldn't be good. Yeah. Thank you, folks. Stay in touch.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, um, let's go to, so that was a action item. Um, it's probably time to do our local hazard mitigation plan. Are we waiting for Marty?
I, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay, so come on up.
And I know that.
This is Stephanie Burke.
Yeah, Ethan, our transportation planner, will be really happy to hear that you guys have.
Yeah, good.
Interest in, in coordinating on that.
We've got a number of businesses along that same stretch, and it's crazy.
It's wonderful. It's, it's really good to see that, you know, work progressing beyond the scoping effort. So it's, it's really nice to see. So.
So you'll help us get some money for a scoping study for our piece?
So, well, you know, part of what we were talking about with the side law.
Yeah.
Is changing the configuration of Route 4, or Route 7 from Max Steel to McKinley Avenue.
Yep.
And trying to extend the left turn lane to that point and allow that because the bike path, the shared use path ends at Comcast.
Yes.
And there's a section there that the bikes are in no man's land. So if we could get the same configuration, that bike path would start earlier.
I think there's a lot of opportunity for you guys to be looking to harmonize at all of the intersection points with your neighbors, you know, as, as projects are moving forward.
Yes.
So yes, absolutely. Speak with Ethan Peppin, our transportation planner. And just to be clear, the scoping effort that was done by Mendon was a bike ped scoping effort. So it was looking at trying to make that Route 4 corridor more accessible for all users. It wasn't really a, it wasn't a traffic study. It was really looking at how to improve bike ped safety on that corridor. And obviously, vehicle speed is a major concern in conflict with that. So, switching hats.
Switching, here we go.
Um, I was here two weeks ago on behalf of your local planning team to present the final draft of Rutland Town's local hazard mitigation plan. And that kicked off the two-week comment period for folks to react to the plan in its entirety. Um, we did receive some review comments from Matt, so I thank you for taking.
Am I the only one?
Yes.
In the whole town?
Yes. But I thank, I thank you and want to recognize you for, for taking the time to read it and provide some thoughtful comments back. And we can discuss them if you'd like. Um, you know, to, I think that I, there's a little bit of context that I'd like for you to know in terms of, you know, how, why things are presented the way they are, and then we can discuss whether they need to be edited.
Okay, well, I have three.
Okay.
Okay, and if anybody else does, let's start with comments first. So my first is on page four.
Mm-hmm.
And it's on the left-hand side, uh, two-thirds of the way down, where it speaks to law enforcement. We actually have five officers and two constables. We have chief deputy school resource officers, Jimmy and.
Jared.
Jared.
Perfect. I'll make that correction.
That's one. That was easy.
Yes.
Page 22, this is the one that, this may be the place, or it may not, but it should be in here somewhere. And this is Joe's idea. And that's a regional dispatch, um, center for the county. Because you can, and I, again, I'm not sure where it goes, but if you want to pull together fire police, do intermunicipal response to hazards, a regional dispatch center is something that is on the radar for a number of the, number of us, I think.
So, starting on page 22 is really where we're laying out your community's capabilities in four different categories to accomplish the, accomplish hazard mitigation to natural hazards.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying this is the best place, but I think what we're missing is some kind of a regional coordinated effort with a dispatch center.
So traditionally, that is a really bright, like a response lane.
Okay.
Type of project, um, as opposed to a mitigation lane project. Type of project, um, as opposed to a mitigation lane project. Um, but let me give some thought to how we might be able to creatively weave that in.
Okay.
And maybe, Mary, it lands at the end of the plans, chapter six, where we talk about integrating into existing plans or procedures or indicating how the concepts from this plan would be integrated into other priorities.
Okay.
So.
That's fine. I just didn't want the idea to pass by.
Let's, let me, you're gonna have to give me a second to just make a note here. And I'd I'd probably circle up with our emergency management planner to talk about what, what is the current state of that. I knew that it was kind of in shambles when I transitioned out of emergency management planning, so it's been a couple of years.
Up at the regional select board meeting.
Yeah.
Couple of weeks ago.
It's been out there for quite a few years now. I just don't know what the current vibe is.
Um, check with Devon because he said he was going to look and see where things stood.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Alright.
Um, regional dispatch. And the issue is really seeing that as a, as a need for the region. Okay.
Alright, Stephanie, part of this is based on the state downsizing their P S apps to two.
Pretty familiar with all the backstory.
Right, so, so Rutland County really took the initiative about what, two years ago, Ed? To, to, to try to come up with a plan to um have a Rutland County dispatch.
Well, I think the commissioner basically said they wanted to divest themselves. The state, the state police department wanted to get rid of that responsibility.
And then, while they were well into this, a couple of years worth of work, planning, the state kind of put a, they, they commissioned folks to look into the problem. And after several months, those folks said, we don't have the ability to assess this problem, so we can't do the job you gave us. And then the state kind of took it back, didn't really do. And then the last I heard is they were talking about opening two more, reestablishing two more P S apps, not that they had done anything wrong, but that this would might work better. And that was about a year and a half, two years ago, and there hasn't been a peep since.
Okay, because that's where I left off, was where the, the, the study was being commissioned. And then I don't, I don't know whatever happened after the study and it doesn't sound like there wasn't much.
The studiers couldn't do the study.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so got it, Mary?
Okay, um, and then the only other comment was just a comment, and that is we've, and and I mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting, um, we should annually look at this and see how we're doing toward meeting the things that are either in progress or we, we need to work on. And I was just trying to think of the best time to do that, um, just probably before budgeting season in September or so, October.
Especially if there's something that needs funding.
Yeah.
You know, because you're nine months away from funding at that point.
Yeah. So just, that's a think piece for all of us.
So page thirty-eight of the plan is the, is the relevant page where we talk about the plan maintenance and annual evaluation and monitoring. And this would, if that is your last comment, Mary, it'd be a good segue into one of Matt's comments.
Okay, good.
Um, so what I, what we do for you here, and I want to make really clear that this level of specificity is what, what has been driven by previous review, plan review comments by Vermont Emergency Management. This used to be a little bit lighter and a little bit looser. And it didn't make the last round of review for the plan I worked on in in Castleton. It was, no, like, you gotta really be beef this, beef this up. So this is, this level of detail is, is a result of prior review comments, but I have not specified in here a time of year for which you will undertake kind of this process. So we can either leave it as flexible or add the level of specificity in terms of when you would like to, to do this, number one on this flow chart, where you actually go in and you look at the effectiveness of how you're doing towards meeting, accomplishing your actions and achieving the goals.
Yeah, that's where my comment was, I think, when you look at the table that's on A two.
Mm-hmm.
And it's B. That's where, to me, this came more useful because then all of a sudden there's this, there's a chart you can follow, you can look to see. Okay, here's the thing we said we were gonna do. Who's who's in charge and here's a timeframe and the status. So it's all kind of mapped out there, uh, which makes it a lot easier to track all of this.
So table A two that you're looking at from the twenty nineteen plan got replaced with table six in the, in the strategy section that starts on page twenty-nine. So the action plan in twenty nineteen did not include all of the implement action plan elements that are now required post FEMA updates.
The old one you could read better.
So.
This does nothing.
Yeah, no, it doesn't. Me neither.
I agree.
So, well, we're, we're kind of stuck with the format at this point. So what this table seven is intended to do is to kind of give you all of your actions in the left-hand column. And a year after your plan is adopt, is, is approved by FEMA, so sometime in twenty twenty-six, you'd be looking back over the past twelve months or so. And you'd be indicating for each of these actions, kind of, where are you at? Are, is it in progress? Is it complete? Is it nowhere? Has something changed in the twelve months where now all of a sudden we're gonna, there's a redirection happening? Um, because what I, what I find with the communities that I've worked with is when it gets to the point where you're updating the plan and you have to prepare that appendix A two where you say, what's the status of the actions from your previous plan, it can be really hard if you haven't been kind of documenting on it at least annual basis, maybe, you know? At least making an attempt to kind of check in and make sure everything is still kind of a priority. Things haven't changed. There's not new information. So, you know, the status kind of in progress or complete is what was expected to be recorded in table seven. So that when you get to updating and you have to explain what's the status, you have a little bit more to work with than just you know, your local planning team members' recollection over the past five years and having to come up with something five years later.
Okay.
So back to Mary's, Mary's comment, do you want on page thirty-eight to include some specificity as to, you know, I could, in number one, I could say, for example, the select board will evaluate the effectiveness of this plan and meeting the stated goals, you know, at the time where they're developing the budget for the upcoming fiscal year.
And then if we miss that, it will look like we failed to do. So, you know, I'm, I'm torn. It's sort of like, if we try and remember that we need to do it and tell Bill. What do you think? Or do we put it in the plan?
I think it's better if we have a specific time.
Okay.
Because.
My concern is, I don't know how everybody else feels here. But that whole packet can be very confusing. And how do we say to our taxpayers? Yeah, I don't plead, I don't completely understand it either. So for us to vote, I mean, there's really an awful lot of I still don't have mine tonight because my husband's going through it tooth and nail because we have a farm. And we're very concerned about infringement onto telling us what we can do with the land that we've paid taxes on. And I'm sure.
I don't know as if this plan does that. I, 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 I don't, I don't think that this plan does that. I don't think this plan gets into regulating land uses. If you look at the range of actions that have been recommended to implement, I don't, I don't see any of those as dictating a land use.
But you're probably referring to the river corridor, right, Sharon?
Right.
Yeah, so they have their property, um, bounded by East Creek.
Yeah.
So there are river corridor plans out there, but if that's not part.
So let me.
If there's something in here specifically, um, alluding to that.
Hold on just a second. So uh, page thirty. Um, the second mini project profile. What I was told is that river corridor bylaws are in development and that you're targeting adoption by twenty twenty-seven. If that is not accurate from your perspective, we can absolutely change the project description, the action description to something more like, um, the feasibility of adopting river corridor bylaws is, will be considered. You know, the, we can move it from a, you know, we're kind of in, we are currently developing these regulations and are targeting adoption, an adoption date to we're not, we're not that far, those decisions have not been made. We are still in the evaluating the appropriateness of this type of tool in our community. And that's your action, is just evaluating. And then I ties into your other comment that we can.
Because it, isn't the state, I mean, that's what Barbara's been talking to us about, whether or not the state is pushing towns to adopt river corridor policies, bylaws, or whatever you want to call it. So I'm not sure where we were with that. If, if the planning commission has been kind of doing the research and they were going to get back to us.
They are.
Yeah.
And we already have a flood hazard area section in our town plan. So this would.
I think you actually have flood hazard area bylaws.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, which would be different.
I'm looking at the map, but yeah.
Yes.
In which case they kind of.
They're, they're a companion piece. Yes, and that's how the action is currently described in your plan.
Yeah.
I think the accurate description right now would be it's under study specifically by the planning commission.
Well, that's the lead party.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
Right, that's.
Yeah, I mean, we've.
Clear.
No, we've, Barbara's talked to us about it a little bit, but we haven't made any decisions about it.
So do you want to, am I hearing you say that you'd be more comfortable backing off on the top, project timeframe to not in, include a target adoption date? Because you're not there yet? And you want to rephrase this action to more of a, we're still evaluating?
Um, it's in development by the planning commission.
Okay.
And um, consider for adoption.
Okay, that would be very good.
Yeah, because by that time, they will have something, they'll have their two public hearings. And then we will have it to see if we're going to adopt it or not, but that doesn't lock us into adopting it.
Very much like that.
That's.
We've not made any decision and who knows what our board will be by the time.
Agreed, agreed. I, right. Does everyone feel comfortable with revising the project timeframe to in development, semi-colon, consider for adoption by twenty twenty-seven? Does that feel more comfortable?
You okay with that?
Um, no, I'm not. I'm not gonna lie. I just think there's an awful lot that we have a right or we have, we owe a lot to our taxpayers. And, and I'm going to be quite frank with you. I mean, I, mine isn't with me tonight because my husband's still studying it.
Mm-hmm.
And so there's a big concern for us owning land along the river corridor.
Sharon, what would you like me to do?
I just think, I think you've got an awful lot to have us accept without breaking it down so that if a taxpayer came to us and asked, well, how come this and that? I would say, you got me because I'm totally confused too. So.
Okay, well, I, I just want to, I just want to, you know, parse some of your phrasing here. You say I, it's not I. It, it's not Stephanie Burke from the Regional Planning Commission.
But you know what I mean.
No, I do, I do want to clarify that point. I'm here really just to facilitate a process. The content of this plan was driven by your planning team, Dave, Bill, and Marty. Would you concur with that? Okay, so just, I, I want to just make that minor point of clarification because I don't want this to perceive, be perceived as me pushing something on the town of Rutland. Um, so I, I hear your concern in terms of maybe not fully being comfortable with the content of the plan, but what I don't know is what you want me to do about that. Do you want me to extend the public comment period? Do you, what, I'm not sure what you want me to do with your concern.
Truthfully, if you broke it down into like one or two page simplified that could be sent to the taxpayers, who would? I mean, we, if we voted in, we're voting it in in the name of our taxpayers.
You're, you're adopting, you, ultimately, the select board will be responsible for adopting the plan. That is correct.
That doesn't mean at this point we're adopting the river corridor portion.
That is correct.
We are just adopting the plan. The river corridor thing, Sharon, I think we're going to get stuck with.
Totally different.
It's going to be part of this plan, but what it's actually going to say, I don't know. And I understand, you know, you own that land and and what, I know what the concept of that quarter plan is, is they don't want people building structures within areas that frequently flood and then having damage and then looking for FEMA for that's, that's what the concept of mitigating construction along the corridor is.
I understand that, Joey. But I al- also understand, along that river corridor are many farms that we know.
Right.
That have managed that land for the state and for the people of this state. My husband is very particular along that waterway.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that part needs to go into what we develop as our bylaws. The fact that we're working on them is all we need to put in here, that we're doing something to try to appease the requirements of the state. What those bylaws are, that's when, what you're, then that's when we need to have the discussion that you're talking about. But to have it in here that we're doing something will help us satisfy the requirements of FEMA for this plan. But what we actually say, what those bylaws are worded and how they are, then that will work on what the planning commission comes up. Because I under, you know, I, I, I don't have land along the creek, but I know what you're saying. You, you put a lot of time and effort into your farm. It, you know, it's part of your family and you don't want necessarily to be told what you can and can't do with that. And and I think a lot of.
When you pay the taxes that we pay.
Right.
Um, we'd like to have a say.
Well, then, then, see, so when, when we actually get into this discussion about the river quarter, I have some ideas that I'd like to share with the planning commission as to what I think, how though, that acreage should be looked at and maybe how it's assessed. It might need to be assessed differently than other land because if if I can't do what I want with it, then why so? But that's another discussion. But I think in here, we have to say that we're doing something. What we do is when we get together with them and say, this is what I have concerns and how are we going to get around it? That, that satisfy what you're thinking?
Yep.
Okay.
So I'm going to just circle back to page thirty-eight. What did you decide on in terms of specifying when the board would be doing their annual evaluation? Are we leaving it as is or are we?
Prior to budget, um, what, what would be the word, budget, uh?
Planning?
Budget.
Budget, well, construction for the coming fiscal year.
Right, some, somewhere in that. That allows us a little leeway. I don't want to say we're going to do it in September because we might not get to it.
Right, but that, so do you want me to say the select board will evaluate the effectiveness, effectiveness of the plan and meeting the stated goals? Um, as part of its upcoming fiscal year budget development?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that gives us time to, where we can fit it in.
Yep.
Okay, I got that. Okay. So now I want to just circle back to Matt's comment
Mm-hmm.
About related to the river corridor bylaws. So on page six of the plan, um, there is a sentence. um, there is a sentence at the very bottom of the right hand column that says in two thousand and nineteen, the adoption of River Corridor bylaws was not selected for implementation.
Right.
Because it lacked political support. So consideration of them now reflects a change in the political climate over the last five years. So Matt, I think, was having, um, some concern over the use of the phrase change in the political climate. So the only reason that that term was used is because in the evaluation table on page twenty seven, one of the criteria that you evaluate each of these action against is that political is the political criteria. And that basically the question that you're answering is, is there overall public support or political will for the action?
Where is that?
Yeah.
So page twenty eight provides you with the definition of the political criteria. And then on page twenty.
Can you just?
Yep.
Pause. Where am I looking? On page twenty?
Three quarters of the way down.
So the table five evaluation criteria are explained.
So this gets, uh, okay, table, this this whole thing's table. Okay, so it's right in the middle, political. Okay. So how, I mean, how does that get evaluated?
So let let, that's what I'm trying to walk you through. So it's described on page twenty six. So in the right hand column, the italicized bold section that says actions without overall public support or political will will not be selected for implementation.
Okay.
Actions whose costs are not reasonable compared to the probable benefits are also not selected. Okay, so in two thousand and nineteen's plan, when they ranked the River Corridor bylaws against this political criteria, they gave it a negative one. Meaning there's no politic, you know, no public support, no political will at this time for that action. So in this current plan, that went from a negative one to is, I think, a one. No, I'm sorry, a zero.
Okay.
So it was, it showed an incremental step up to it's, it's not, there's not, it it's not, we're not, we're saying that, you know, it there's not support, but there's not objection. It's kind of a more neutral action from a political will, public support standpoint.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's just.
So I can change that language if you'd like, but I'd like you to know, I'd like for you to tell me.
That's helpful.
What you want it to say.
I guess it's not, I mean, it doesn't really matter to me. It strikes me, it based on your explanation, it sounds like it's something that's required to be in there. It strikes me as an odd thing to have in this sort of plan, but I I I guess I understand what it's trying to get at and you know, it's not really material to the to the overall plan. So.
Okay. So Matt, are you okay with both of your comments not resulting in any edits in the plan? Okay.
Um, what's actually happened on page six is that we've had two major flooding events in the the summers of twenty three and twenty four. It didn't happen to affect our town very much, but it sure did other towns. And, you know, we watched the news and read the newspapers, so.
Would you like me to expand on that as a possible justification? I mean, I think that's reflected in section five, when you look at the flood profile.
Say something like flooding is has been a topic of broad public concern in the state or something like that, you know.
I'm happy to provide some expansion on why maybe there's been a change in the political climate, but I need you guys to provide me the language.
But I'm not sure that there has, except there's more awareness that flooding events present real problems because of recent floods in other parts of the state.
All I'm trying to describe here is the fact in two thousand and nineteen, you said negative one as a community. And now you're saying zero as a community. I'm trying to explain why now this action is made the cut. Cause if it was a negative one, it had been cut and not recommended for implementation. So I'm just, all I was trying to do was just note that the reason that it's in the plan now and wasn't in two thousand and nineteen is because now there's been an incremental sense that you know, maybe it's, it is appropriate to start considering this tool today as opposed to five years ago. But I'm not committing, we're not, you're not committing to anything because the way the action's phrased, right? We changed it to it, this, these bylaws would be considered for adoption. They're not committing you to adoption.
Mm hmm. All right.
Okay. All right, so, um, is there any further discussion from the board regarding the draft? Hearing nothing?
What's the next step? I'm looking at the.
That's what I was gonna ask. Are you ready to move forward? But I didn't want to, like Matt told me to slow down, slow my roll. So I was just trying to be respectful.
We're, this is the end of the com, public comment period.
Yes.
And you're going to spend, you're going to address some comments if they're appropriate.
So the only co, I guess what I'm trying to, the punchline I'm trying to get to, Mary, is the only comp, the only edits are those that you just gave me.
Right.
So in my opinion, those edits do not substantially change the content of this plan.
Yeah, no, right.
So the option on the table is, you know, do you feel comfortable approving this draft with the edits that you've instructed me to make on behalf of the planning team? Um, are you, are you comfortable with once those edits are made, approving tonight, submitting the plan to the state for approval pending adoption?
Okay.
Or would you like me to make those changes and then present it back to you at your next board meeting and have you make take action to approve, submit it for approval pending adoption?
They were pretty minimal.
Yes.
The changes. Yeah. So I'm ready to vote. But, okay.
You know, I think we've, the topics of discussion have been expressed and and, you know, there's not a lot of, we're not changing really the substance, just a few ways to get to where we're going.
Wait. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Motion's been made to.
I'm sorry, it's not adopting.
Submit the plan to state for approval pending.
She said.
Okay.
Do that thing.
Um, yes.
With, with edits.
With the edits.
As edited.
Yep. Is that a second?
That's a second.
Okay, motion's made in second. And any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, one opposed, three, one, and one not present. Okay. So we're
I think.
Good to move ahead. Thank you very much.
I think we're good. You're very welcome. So I'll go ahead and make these changes. I'll get the plan submitted ASAP. And I'll of course be copying the planning team on that submittal so they'll be kept in the loop from this point forward. Um.
So where we at? Somebody's, um, their timetable to when we hear back.
Correct. So you remember in your packet before you had this review tool?
Yeah.
They will review your plan against this rubric and give us some feedback. I guarantee you, they will not say it's approved on the first go around.
There'll be some changes.
And depending on what they come back with, as far as requests for changes, will di, will dictate whether this plan is back before you folks, before it's buttoned up. Okay.
Good. Well, thank you for all of your work on this. And and Bill.
You're welcome.
And Dave. And Marty.
Ready him.
Okay, uh, do we have any other questions from the floor, public comments, folks who are not otherwise on the agenda? No? Okay. Anyone on the screen? There's no raised hands on the Zoom callers. Okay. Let's move into our agenda. Um, Dave Sears, you know, I almost missed this bill. I think the green is too, too deep.
A little too green.
It is, I I couldn't read it. And if we copied it, you wouldn't be able to see it at all. So. Um, okay, Dave, you're in green.
I'm green.
Yeah.
All right. Um, start right off with the fun stuff, state forms.
Yep.
In your green folder.
Thank you.
So there's, uh, three forms in there that need to be signed by the board.
Um, they were also in our packet, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but so we can move forward with the class two paving grant and the state structures grant.
Okay.
Green B.
These are number four, number five, and
one C L.
Okay. Five is a two pager. So let's start with town regions.
There's all their different numbers in the original.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry about that, folks.
Just the two things for A and for B. Got it.
Okay. Town, ridge and roads, road and bridge standards and network inventory. Want to start with that?
B.
Okay. What are we being asked to sign?
Uh, just that we have, um, uh, an inventory of roads and bridges and that we are up to date with all of that stuff.
Okay. And the actual mileage is reflecting on the second page of the next document.
That's the second one. So we need to do these separately. So I move that we, um, approve the certificate of the clients for town roads, bridges, and network inventory.
Motion's been made to approve the road and bridge standards and network inventory. Is there a second?
Second.
Action's been seconded. Discussion. Do you, did the Highway Committee look this over? Don't you do this?
We don't usually, no. This is prepared by the, um, Road Commissioner.
Okay. All right. If there's no discussion, all in favor of adopting, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries four, zero. And we all get to sign. Is today, is today the tenth?
The eleventh.
Okay, next is the annual financial plan for town highways. And I think this is the one where we have to swear that we're spending at least three hundred dollars for every mile of class one, two, and three town highways.
Can you explain what that's about?
I have no, it's, it's
just trying to make sure we have enough skin in the game.
I think so, yeah. Three hundred dollars is the, that's the benchmark.
I think we're pretty well over it.
Got that covered.
Yeah.
Couple times over.
All right. Is there a motion?
So.
Motion to approve, second. And seconded. Um, any discussion? Not all in favor of adopting the certification that we spend at least three hundred dollars a mile? Please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay. All right.
I don't work enough work. Uh, winter events, we've had many. Uh, the contractors are up to thirty six calls right now, so we're, yep. But I'm going to say probably by the end of the week, we'll be at that magic forty. Uh, because we got some stuff coming tomorrow night and the Thursday, and then sounds like Saturday, Sunday is going to be a blockbuster. So um, Cargill is out of treated salt. We are using white salt now. Um, they don't have any in Colchester and they don't have any in Rutland. So we're we're using white. We've got some liquid, so we're going to treat at the spinners. We're kind, we're kind of okay there. Um, we're a little over budget in salt.
Really?
Yeah. At current, we're about fifty eight thousand over in salt. It's just, this year is just killing us. So, um, something we'll talk about with the Highway Committee at some point, but uh, I got about seventy thousand dollars left back or back, got back from the state for class two paving. So I can use that to offset. I was, I had a plan to use that for paving this spring, but kind of see how everything sugars off and um, I've been working on the paving list for this, uh, upcoming season when there isn't any more snow. Uh, I get that almost done. Uh, the fire station is included in it. Um, I'm looking at the development of, um, Columbus, Susan, David, Deborah, that whole big development up there.
Yeah.
Um, so there's obviously not enough money to do that whole development in a year. So it'd probably be like a three year project. And then for the class two paving grant, I'm going to apply for Killington Avenue from basically Windmere to the, uh, town line road, kind of tie that whole section together. Uh, we're actually, and I'm going to submit the, uh, structures grant for the Stratton Road covert replacement. So we'll see how that all plays out. And we've spent time and money. You know, you don't want to hear this, but so are.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, we went down there last Thursday again with the company out of Burlington. And we went in from the, uh, Days Inn side and we managed to get the jetter through, sort of. Uh, got it hung up coming back, but we got it out. Um, so we got it opened up anyway. Uh, it's not flowing magically, but it's flowing, it's taking water. Um, we did find as we were cleaning it, the car wash discharged. And we got three or four cans. Kurt isn't here. Kurt had pictures. My phone died, so I couldn't get the pictures, but uh, there's like three or four cans and a grade steak, piece of chunk of grade steak and some couple chew cans and some stuff. So a lot of our problem that we've had down there with not necessarily with the whole problem, but some of the debris that we've been finding over the months have been coming from the car wash. Um, I went there Friday and talked to them. I talked to the manager and he said that they have grates on everything. There's no way that the anything can get into the system. And I'd had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with, uh, a truck operator from A one. So I called him and asked him, and he said, yeah, they just put the grates on not too long ago. So we are, I I ordered a, uh, a wire basket to put inside. It goes, slides inside the invert for the manhole, uh, right at their driveway. And as soon as that comes in, that'll go in. And any debris that comes in from this point forward will be trapped inside that manhole and it won't get in to the downstream system.
Okay.
It doesn't fix where we are now, but it's, it fixes the future, sort of.
So this manhole is right at the car wash?
Yes, it's in, in Diamond Run's
Okay.
road that goes up to the mall, but it's just outside their driveway.
Okay.
When that plugs.
When that plugs.
At least you'll be able to catch where the cans are coming.
Yeah.
Right.
And and we've had that discussion for the past four or five months.
Yes, we have.
Where the can's coming from. And those cans are getting, and bottles have gotten lodged in the deteriorated pipe.
Yep.
The fact that you guys were able to either push something out of the way or break something.
I think we just pushed something kind of to the side. Um, like I said, they they got through. And then they got kind of hung up coming back through it. And then we tried to go back in again and, uh, he hit it again and kind of plugged it up because that was the time when they were discharging and the manhole kind of filled up and we kept trying to jet it and jet it. And we finally got it to go and the water went down and we pulled it out and said the water's flowing, we're out. So.
So was there a meeting with the state?
Yeah.
So, so that's committee, that's.
Okay.
My turn.
That's you.
Yeah, this is Highway Committee meeting.
Right. So, um, David asked for this meeting and we asked Robert Clark to attend and, um, the, um, Chris Taff from the V Trans, because he's going to be the guy we're dealing with. And the long and short of this is we've got to figure a plan to replace that pipe. Um, the state, um, says that they want you to try to directionally. Um, the state, um, says that they want you to try to directionally bore that three times and fail before they're going to do something. And, and even Chris kind of shook his head at that because they understand the situation there. Um. The, um, biggest obstacle really isn't digging Route seven. It's the depth of the pipe. This, this pipe is down anywhere from 12 to 13 feet. Um, it's gonna be a huge excavation. They will require it to be sleeved, which means we have to put in an 18 or 20 inch sleeve, put the pipe through. But in the future, we'll be able to change stuff. Um, so Kurt couldn't make the meeting, but he had sent me a text and said, you know, and he'd asked me to talk about putting this at the top of the list and so I don't know if I overstepped my bounds or not, but Dave and I discussed it, we discussed it, the whole thing. And we asked, um, Robert in Otter Creek Engineering to get right on this. I'm, I'm guessing the board would approve this, but they were supposed to go down yesterday. They had talked about and start the survey process. They will be submitting letters to the state highway regarding, um, what we want to do, what they're gonna require to do that. Um, open cutting Route seven is the from all, all of the things we talked about is going to be the most reliable and the most, um, effective way of remedying the problem. One of the things that has happened over the years down there that, um, in previous, there was some thought that that pipe went from six to four to six.
Yeah.
But what in actuality is it's six all the way across and the cast iron pipe has deteriorated and it's smaller. But one of the things that's out there with cast iron, and I've got, I've talked to several people that have been in this kind of work. The grease deteriorates the cast iron. It actually, yep, there's some acidity and some reaction. So all those years that Denny's and Ponderosa ground around were dumping and that grease was going through there and plugging that. And probably where those plugs were is right about where that problem is, it actually eats that pipe up. So because the pipe has deteriorated to this point, we can't, they have a way of, um, bursting that pipe and putting something through and making it bigger, but the pipe has to have integrity.
Well.
And the integrity is gone, so that won't, that's not gonna work. So we're trying to work with coming up with the best solution to do this. Um, it would probably be a three phase, it would be done all at once, but it'd be three sections. It's approximately 200 feet. Manhole to manhole, so the, the, um, imperfection of concern is almost dead center in the North Mountain lane. So the, they would have to dig, probably start at the manhole, dig about at least to that point, 70, 80 feet, figure a way to reroute the four lanes of traffic. Install the sleeve, install new pipe and leave a section open to hitch to the other pipe. Then fill that back in, compact it, move traffic to that side, dig a middle section. Um, you know, Cop John Drive is gonna be closed. There, there's, this is, this is not anything, this is like a nightmare and this is, you couldn't dream up anything much.
Well, I, but they've done similar things.
They're gonna, I mean, I think, I think eventually they're, they're gonna have to allow us to open cut this. I, I don't, you know, the, uh, Robert and, and Chris were talking back and forth and, and they're pretty much in agreement that trying to directional bore at that depth requires a crater of probably 30 by 50 feet dug on the downhill side, right? Because they do it uphill. So that means you got to have this huge crater down there somewhere like Cop John Drive and Aspen Dental and all that to be able to, because they put the pipe in in 20 foot lengths. So you have to have some way to push those in, weld the next one to it and push it, and it's in it to get the pitch and get the grade, it's just gonna be so. Um, so he's gonna try to really make a case for us, Robert is, and they're gonna get some work done. Um, one of the suggestions is, and we probably can get the state to allow us to do this, is to put some kind of a holding tank, septic tank, either, I think it's before that manhole, right?
It could be just outside that manhole.
Somewhere outside the manhole, put something in the ground, dig a hole, bury a concrete tank, so it'll act as storage and we can stop the discharge to the surface. Because.
They discharge a lot.
Right, but it's not, um, it's not all at once. They have up to 8,000 gallons a day. So if they're doing it, and the way the system works, the way Dave explained it, it's a series of tanks. There's no pumping. So as the tanks fill and they settle out, when it gets down to the last one and it's up, then that runs out and.
Okay.
Um. Basically, because they recycle their water.
Yeah.
So it goes into a tank and then it settles out and it goes into a tank and sells out. And then when they get really busy, the last tank has an overflow, so it just fills up, it overflows and just drains out.
Right.
But I mean, I'm just looking at the minutes, it says approximately 600 gallons per hour when they're very busy.
Right.
That's a lot.
Well, that's an estimate. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bill went and did some research and, and they, they're using, their average is 6,000 gallons a day. So they're open 10 hours, so we just did the math backwards. It's a total estimate.
So, you know, if we were to put in a couple of thousand gallon storage tank, I mean, there's gonna be an expense here. This will buy us some time. And, and our biggest concern is, you know, the town doesn't want to get slammed for doing some environmental damage because of this. So we put that in, that would technically hold about three hours worth of discharge. Which would allow, as long as we can stop the debris, which Dave, the basket will do. This tank will also probably help us some way to maybe sort some stuff that might get through on that option. And that will allow the accumulation and then it can kind of keep up with it. That it's, it's, you know, and this is stuff that Robert's gonna work on, how we can do this, um.
So this is like temporary until.
This is, this will be a temporary, this is a Band-Aid on a severed leg. It's the only way I can explain it because it's, we're, we're trying to get through this and, you know, hopefully, you know, we've kind of known about it, but it hasn't got to this, this state. So this will help us get through that. Um, we can develop a plan. Um, I have no idea. I don't think you do. I don't think anybody does on a timeline. Um, this would want to be a summer project.
Yeah.
Um, I'm figuring probably a month to dig across there. Wouldn't you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be between, you know, chain, moving traffic around and I, I mean, it's, it's so deep. It's, that's really the, the big problem is it's just so ridiculously deep.
You know, if it was a, a normal sewer line, probably buried four or five, six feet would be no, I mean, when they just took those 45s out. You know, we could have stacked three of Sharon's in there and, and not been being able to, I mean, they, they had a huge.
Joy, I do appreciate.
They had a huge crater there, Sharon. You wouldn't, you just wouldn't believe how far down they had to go to find that thing. And, and those are so low and then Route seven is built up so high, so that, you know.
Is there, uh, speaking from ignorance here, can we do a less deep pipe? And just abandon the old one?
Not in.
No, because you gotta get, you gotta get the effluent to it.
Right.
You can't come in up here if it's coming in here.
It's all down, it's all.
All down, it's, all the inverts come right in together in the bottom.
One of the things we discussed that. So, so one of the things Robert said, he said, if we were putting a water line across Route seven, that was a, you know, you could bore across through there. Water's under pressure, it's no big deal. A gravity system, this has to have a particular pitch. It's usually somewhere between an eighth and a quarter inch per foot in order to get everything to flow. So they have to get over their survey, figure out, so I think we figured out about 15 inches to work with.
About that, yeah.
Across that road. So I brought up the idea, well, what if we bored across and put a pumping station where the manhole is? And he said that realistically, a pumping station would be more expensive, the yearly maintenance than if you, if you open, you know, open cut it. Open cutting is the least expensive, it is the most, um, invasive, because we're, we're really gonna make a heck of a mess here. But that's really, but he said a pumping, you know, you could put like maybe a four inch force made across, three or four inch force made would handle all of that. But you're talking a couple of pumps, you're talking a big pumping station, you're, you know, and he said, he's seen these projects run three, 400,000 just for a pumping station. And that doesn't even.
That's just for the station.
Yeah, and that doesn't count the boring across.
So speaking of money, what's it gonna cost? I know we have money in our.
Pick a number.
Pick a number.
Well, I want a number below what we have in our water sewer fund.
That's probably doable.
Wow, I don't want to drain our.
With a capital P on probably.
Well. It, I mean, this is, this, this 200 feet is going to be like almost one of the worst case scenarios and one of the most expensive things we're gonna have to do. And there's just no easy fix to it. I mean, we've, we've talked to people, engineers, we've talked to everybody. You know, and nobody can seem to come up with any idea of how to make this work. Unless something develops sooner than that. I mean, Robert seems to be right on this. He really seems to know. This is what they do. Um, so they're, they're, they're like our go-between with the state. They're gonna take care. I think the permitting, the letter of intent, what we're trying to do, the state will allow us to do some stuff without actually um, but I think he said without actually being officially permitted, it's like because we're, you know, they'll let us get going.
Yeah, okay.
So we're, you know, I think this is the biggest thing we got.
You know, like when we did the, the straight pipe over at the Aspen Dental manhole, I, I just, I, I had to do a permit for the state. I sent it in there like, we understand what you're doing, go ahead, it might not be approved, but it's coming, just do your thing, don't wait for us, so. They're kind of forgiving in that way. I think trying to convince them to let us open that Route seven is gonna be.
Control a greater environmental damage.
Right, right. I mean, realistically. This needs to be done July, August of this year.
Yep.
And whether or not we can get it done that fast, we, we really can't go through another winter.
No.
And, and we haven't even got, like Dave said, you get the first 45 degree day, 40 degree day.
Oh.
That car washed, the, he thought it was busy the other day and the guy said, when it's busy, he said, they're circling the parking lot, you know, wait. It's three lanes, two lanes.
Three lanes, yeah.
Three lanes and it's just unbelievable. So you know, we, we're, we're trying to get ahead of it.
And it was busy that day and it was like 26 degrees. I mean, it doesn't matter.
Um, so what do we need to do, if anything, tonight?
Cross your fingers and pray.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that the rest of you are okay with us asking Robert to get started right on this.
I don't think we have a choice.
Yeah. You know, that was.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Gotta do.
Motion.
Well, what exactly did you tell him to do?
Um, we told him to come up with plans to, um, try to mitigate the problem, what, what, what we can do. And to, to communicate with the state for permits and permission.
So this is engineering.
To, uh, ratify that request, Robert Clark to do that for.
On our second. Motion's made and seconded to ratify the Robert Clark work order. Um, discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries four zero.
We didn't hear anything from them yet. They did, because they were, they, they thought, he thought they would be able to start yesterday.
Yeah, I, I was down there a couple of times yesterday just to check and, you know, see if it was surcharging or whatever. I didn't see anybody down there, but so if it was, wasn't there all day.
Yeah, if we could stop the bottles, it won't hurt the debris. Chances are water in effluent will flow through there.
Right.
Um. Like you said. That's all you can do.
Yeah.
You know.
That's all my good news for the night.
Okay.
Oh, yay.
Question.
We did talk a little bit about the striping out here and, and stuff and.
And Matt's got a question for you too.
Uh, just on the salt situation, which sounds dire.
Hmm.
Um, how much stockpile do you have now and you dare hazard a guess at how long it might last?
I have, we have probably right around 200 tons. Uh, they brought us 150 or 160 yesterday.
Oh.
Um, and I got a couple, had a couple, had a small pile, so, um, I got, definitely got enough to get through what we've got coming this week. Um. I made a, a gesture to Cargill or Barrett, who's the trucking company, that, um, we've got liquid, so if they get treated salt in, they can disperse it to the other towns and we'll just keep going with the white and they were extremely appreciative, so I'm pretty sure. They're talking about getting maybe, I think they said six or seven rail cars of treated in this week. So, um, I think that if, if they get those in and they can keep everybody else happy, I think we can get what we want. I'm not worried about that.
Well, I give, my question is, really, how much more expenditure might we be in for for, I mean, obviously you don't know which is gonna.
What, what is March gonna be like? How many two-foot storms do we get in March?
So we just.
Go down and talk to the woodchuck. How much, how much do you?
20,000.
How much do you use every time you go out and do it?
Yeah.
Somewhere between 40 and 50 tons probably. Depending on what it is. I mean, you know, these little dustings, you use almost as much as you do for a foot. You know, because a foot, you just, you just plow and you do the, the steep hills and the intersections and then salt everything at the end. And with these, um, little, these little pesky little dustings, you're doing everything over and over and over again, because it's every day. I mean, we had, what was it, two weeks ago, we were out every day for 10 days or something. It's.
You just have to do it every time. I mean, you put it down.
I'm happy not, you tell me, tell me not, please.
I'm not saying.
Come on with it.
I'm not saying make it unsafe. My question is, you put down salt, day one, I mean, it's not all gonna run off the road and.
You get a little bit of residual, but not a lot. You do get a little bit and that generally helps you in the beginning. You know, when it first starts to snow, you'll see that it's snowing and it's collecting on the sidewalks around the lawn, but it's not really doing anything in the street. That's just residual and then it breaks down and dilutes. It's salt, Brian, it's just, it dilutes down and once that dilutes down, it just, I mean, and you're back in the game. And if it's, you know, a, a little quick, something comes through town fast, then maybe we won this one, but we haven't had any of those.
And I do believe there's rain and freezing rain and is that the next one? Is that what they're predicting for Thursday night and?
Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday morning.
Is a nor'easter.
You know, we haven't had winter in several years and now we're getting it all, we're, we're getting our collection all this year.
Yep.
Yep.
This, this is why it's so difficult to plan a budget. You do, you know, you make the best effort and then you go for what mother nature gives us.
Um, so nothing more? Anything more from highway committee or have we covered what was?
We've covered it. Um, we did talk a little bit about the, um, Green Mountain Plaza intersection.
Yeah.
And, um, we do need to get the traffic study to the state and, you know, we'll just kind of move forward with that. Um, he did ask me why we wanted to do this and I told him it was to improve traffic flow out of the Green Mountain Plaza.
Okay.
And because of the backed up lines and stuff and he said that's, so.
Okay.
And that's our kind of thing where we're looking to do.
Okay, very good. All right, I think you're, thank you very much.
You guys have a good day.
Yeah.
You too. All right, next, Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Probably should have sat down and said, great, bye. You don't always say. Thanks. I just quickly, I just liked, uh, we moved in on Saturday, the new building. I'd like to thank all the members around town PD, uh, their wives, children, uh, for all their help for, it was awesome.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah. Here. Thank the, uh, townsfolk folks for supporting us and the new villain. It's it's, uh, amazing. Sometimes I feel like a BB in a big five gallon barrel. I'm not complaining at all. Thank the flight board and for all your support. I'll let, Joe, thanks for helping out and the JP for what he's done. I guess the only other thing about the, we just started wrong with the building this point. Now we got two doors that won't shut on their own. That's it so far, so.
They won't shut or?
Yeah, the door, uh, between the, our first bay and the fire department, if you don't yank on it, it'll stay open. And the outside door on the west side towards the Staples barracks, that one, you gotta yank on that one, that one up feels pretty loose too, so those are only two things we can.
So one of the things Gary said is as you move in, you and the fire department.
Yeah.
Make a list.
Okay.
That, that, that way, when we need to, they'll come back and they'll remedy whatever's on the list.
Okay.
So that, that's what, instead of coming back for each individual.
Yeah, Joey, I had a question, because, um, I brought some stuff over the other day for the, the police station and I called Lynette ahead of time, but there's no bell to ring to get her attention. If, if you, you know.
There is that. We don't have a.
You gotta have some way of either an intercom, you press a buzzer, you say who it is.
A doorbell.
Like the school has.
Yeah, something.
Yeah, even a bell would.
Even a doorbell, right.
Oh, we were, yeah, I was out there visiting with Lynette and Kurt and I said, you could, there's an outlet right there and that has to be, plug in one of those battery operated doorbells.
So.
Yeah, we could.
Um, I, you know, we can, these are some little things that got
Yes.
overlooked in the process, so we'll have to, that may, you know, it's gonna be on us. Um, the fact that we have, um, one of the fire department members works for the electrician. So, you know, Chris can work with them and JJ to. One of the fire department members works for the electrician, so you know, Chris can work with them and JJ to.
Yeah, I, I would be back, cause we keep miss, we don't miss things, but I don't wanna miss things, but as you find things. Funnel them all to Joe, because it's really, make a list.
Make a list, we get a list of stuff together.
If you think you've listed it before, get it to him. Great suggestion.
Figured out.
Get it to, to Joe.
They, they rectify the, um, it needed an exit sign from one, from the Sallyport into that other bay. They had to put an exit sign over the door. I don't know if they got that done yet.
Oh, I hadn't paid attention.
Yeah, well, that's one of the things that was missing and that, all of the rest of the exit signs are hardwired, but. For a couple that were missed, I figured just you can put battery ones in there so that.
Joey, the other thing is, um, there's nothing to identify police station. Over there on the side, there's no sign or anything. Not that you don't want company, but. But I mean, if somebody.
It's gotta be, I mean, public safety and they just see the fire department.
Right.
There's gotta be some way that.
That will probably.
Yeah.
Need to add to.
Yeah.
But, but again, this, these are things.
They pop up.
There's, there's, there's a few glitches in there and I was gonna talk, you know, if Chris is on, whether they're working on their antennas. Um, that, you know, they needed to get, those should have been installed prior to moving. I, I don't know what the glitch was with CDC and how come they're not there. Um, another thing that's on us on the fire department side is, um, the building committee did not specify. To have the same door lock setup as we have here at the town office at Central. And so the locks that are, there's three locks there. That are not compatible with the four others we have. Um, I don't know how that got slipped by. I, I remember talking about it as a group here one night and I thought for sure Ed was here and I don't know how they missed that, that, that was not specified. So the locks that are there requires each individual code to be programmed in manually. They're not computerized. So at some point, that's gotta be rectified.
Alright.
So we get the, and I'm hoping, you know, Royals does their work. I'm hoping that they will be able to put the same style door locks. Without us requiring to get new doors, cause sometimes you can't, once the doors are. Done for drilled and cut and for particular locks that you may not be able to put the other ones in, cause right now, the way things are done, the town has a program. So Bill can just, you know, he usually does that. The computer just open the panel, plug it in, pretty much just change stuff. So have you got through everybody?
Oh, no.
No? Just slowly working at it or?
It's a, it's a bit of a process, so.
Okay, yeah, you know, so and the other thing that those, you know, and I, and I do remember talking about, I just don't know how it got missed. Those locks that we have here monitor the comings and goings of each individual's code. So if you have a problem and somebody's been in the building, you know who's been there and their timestamp. So it's in, kind of important that we get those. Um, retrofitted at some point, but.
Right. Um, while we're on the subject, um, you, we did, you did a walkthrough.
I've been through it, yeah.
Okay, and we have a punch list?
There were a few items that were listed, some, um, uh, one of the papers that I know is on our desk or something that the state.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I did see those. That's for their, their purposes, but that doesn't necessarily cover.
Right, this is what, the things we're working on now, the doors that, um, Ed's talking about, um, the. Some of the other little items, um, anything that the MS has put in that was as per specifications in the design. That are, are right, then those are the things we need to talk, the stuff that we wanna add. Like the doorbell system or changing these locks, those are on us. So we'll, there's some stuff, there's, there's a whole bunch of stuff in the kitchen. Um, the, uh, Gary pointed out that the cabinets weren't the same, so they didn't put handles and stuff because somehow rather than, when the cabinets were ordered. Some of them don't have the same design as the other ones. So they've got the right ones, there's fillers, you know, at the ends and stuff. All of that stuff is. Just waiting on arrival and VMS will install it.
Okay. Um, yeah, go ahead.
So is this stuff here all on VMS or?
I had that list and, and I'm not.
There you go.
Uh, was in the packet, okay.
Let me find it. Gotta be there.
Squirk your way down.
I, I remember seeing it. Anyway, so, yeah, I believe. Um, this, this temporary sprinkler, that was because that, the sprinkler company couldn't get the right. The, the sprinkler missing stickers, those were on, uh.
Those have been done, right?
Yep, so that stuff, a lot of this stuff, the nine-one-one address, you know, the, the.
We gotta do it fast because we're on everybody else.
Yeah.
Make sure you measure it right though.
Yeah.
Yeah, the numbers weren't, you know, they, they weren't put on. The ADA parking space is one per twenty-five. Because the driveway, the, the building hasn't final paving done, um, that hasn't been designated. Um, so, so that, I don't know how you do that prior to.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I noticed that occupancy's been granted.
Right.
These are things we do have to deal with.
There was, they were working on the carbon monoxide, so during the testing, what they don't want is if, um. The fire alarm goes off in there and the carbon monox, the carbon monoxide detectors go off, the building goes into a ventilation. Procedure which exhausts the carbon monoxide and you don't want those running when the fire alarm's going off. Because there's a fire in there, you don't want to be introducing more air. So they worked on that, got that taken care of. Um. The, uh, the insurance company has to do the boiler inspection like they always do, so, um. And then, um, the fire extinguishers are all brand new.
Yeah.
But, but they weren't inspected yet. So it's like, a lot of this stuff is just, I don't, just picky, nothing, um. The one pool station that wasn't in the middle bay that worked bay for the PD, um. I don't know how that got missed, you know, if it wasn't in the plan, it didn't get on here, but there's one in the Sallyport that doesn't need to be there. So they're gonna just put a plastic cover so it can't be.
What's the pool station?
For the fire alarm.
Oh, 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 okay.
So those, um. And then, um, the two, the, we talked about the two exit signs, one has to be in the, um. Sallyport to the maintenance bay and then from the maintenance bay outside. Um, so whether we put up, you know. I'm not sure if they were in the plans, but. How those, but that's basically all they came up with, which isn't bad for.
And that's just.
That's what the state did.
Right, right.
So those are the deficiencies and I believe these are, um, most of this is on, you know, VMS.
Yep.
The other thing that we see is, uh, for NCIC regs, we have to hover our windows, shades. So people can't look in the windows and look at our computers.
I have a suggestion.
What's that?
Go down to the Center Atlin Fire Station and look at the shades and the windows in the meeting room and see if that's something you like.
Okay.
Those are open and closable.
Okay.
Yep.
I wanna ruin that nice view you have. Actually, your office probably doesn't have one at all.
When you sit down, I see the sky and the some mountains, it looks pretty good. Anyways, uh, but.
Yeah, we're, we gotta ask them some shades of people that did these here. We talked to Bill about it.
Yeah.
Somebody wanted one in the middle so it can go this way, but the price is outrageous. We're not doing that.
No.
Yeah, the ones we got here go, they don't go from the top down. I think that's what Ted got quoted. So I was like, ooh, that was.
Yeah, I went in the middle and you could go like this, so you leave the top open and, and. Yeah, we're not doing that in the, uh.
You could also just, I mean, it looks weird, but mount them halfway and just.
Yeah.
Put them in upside down.
Good.
But I know the ones at, at the Mc Center Station in that, in meeting room, those work pretty good, that, that style. And they're, you know, closable so they can darken the room.
Alright. The other thing is, uh, the, the front door, every door has a key you can punch in to get in from the outside, from the. Where you walk into the front of the station where Lynn's offices, there's this great bulletproof door resistant. Uh, there's no, there's a spot for a keypad there, but in the plans, they never put it in the thing. So they, either, I know, we talked to the guy who says, yeah, we got all wired up for one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think we had a quote on it, I think it was, uh, I don't think we need all this, but it's like nineteen hundred dollars, we'll just weigh in that too. But I think it has everything in it, so it's like fourteen hundred dollars just for a keypad to open that door, so.
Turn the outside door from the parking lot.
From the parking lot, that door there to get into the vestview has a keypad. From the vestview into the PD, you have to have a key. Or have to go around, if you don't have the key, have to run around the fire department and the back way that way, that's all.
So was the key, was a, was a keypad specified, do you know, or not?
I don't. Well, I don't know.
Okay, so.
So you need to, you need to check.
That's one of the things to put on, we need on that lift to park at VMS for.
Um, Bill, when you're doing the minutes, I know I did this to you once before, everything that's mentioned, please specify. Cause it might be the only way that if, if we repeat it in a note here and then a comment here and in the minutes, we should be getting everything.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Alright.
The other thing is, uh. Ted got ahold of, uh, Unity Bank on the cruiser.
Yep.
The finance for that, but apparently they have another section of the bank that does the underwriting for. For, uh, towns and he wanted our, one of the, uh, interest rate for tonight and they said there's no way.
Okay.
Get it. And Carrie was supposed to do the other one, but Carrie's, now she's out sick, so we, we didn't bother her at this.
Okay, alright.
We did call.
You guys were in more of a hurry than we were, so I know you wanna get the thing ordered, so.
Well, it's, it's not that, it's just that they have it there, so Ted, Ted checked with, uh, McGovern's and the car's still there, still earmarked for us. So hopefully the next two weeks we can.
Okay.
Numbers and you guys make a decision next time.
Any way we could put a down payment on it to hold it?
It's up to you folks.
Well, it depends, if they will hold it and if they would take a down payment to hold it further, if they, if they make any noises about that.
Okay, I can all ask Ted and, uh, you have an amount you guys want or ask them what they want?
Ask them.
I mean, some, some kind of a down payment to hold, I mean, we, there is some money in the depreciation that could make a down payment. And then we can either borrow, reimburse the depreciation once we borrow the value of the vehicle, like we're planning. That way we won't lose it, cause.
Do you wanna give me a number that authorized me to hold?
What's the total? Seventy?
Seventy.
Twenty thousand, twenty percent? Usually you'd think they'd hold it for twenty-one day.
I'm cheap.
That's fourteen grand.
I'm, no, five.
Five? We'll make an offer, see what they want.
Okay.
I mean, I think they know we're pretty interested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But hopefully they understand the, some of the.
We're serious, it's gonna happen.
So if you offer them a down payment, that might make sure they know we're interested.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do that. Us, that's all I have on that. Okay, then I guess we can go to move on to stats.
Okay.
I'll do the, uh, south end stats first. So things have gone down. Compared to last year. Little higher than, little lower than December, a little higher than November. We had a, we've had a. New batch of people coming to town that seem to be a hassle down to Green Mountain Plaza, just different folks, I haven't seen them before, trying to ID them. We've got two of ID'd now. There's a few more that we just don't know who they are. I, they leave and they go towards the quality and that, and generally, we just found a gentleman yesterday. Who, uh, stole dicks and we saw him standing in front of quality and tried to pass all his. Goods off to his girlfriend, but we, we got them back. Now we know who they are. Gave him an invitation to go to court if he decides to go or not. So we'll see what happens there. Hoping that's, any questions on these stats here?
What's out there for people camping outside?
I know there's a few on the end of our Ranbury Road. Haven't, I know we got a few down behind the hotel itself. They're not, I know both of those people there. I haven't s- been down there in a couple of weeks, to be honest with you, so, but they seem to be managing okay.
Okay.
You know, the state police just, they got someone on a warrant on the dead end section of Ranbury this week. So they had a warm place to stay for at least a couple nights.
Okay.
So they went to court and, uh. And I know there's another gentleman moved, moved from, uh, one of the hotels into the, uh. Property across from, I think it's from Ace Hardware.
Oh.
Moved into town property.
Yes.
Know that person, so.
Yeah, yes. Number two call type you have categorized here is suspicious. Are those falling into any particular?
Uh, we're talking this one here?
Yeah. Is that, uh, is there something in particular that is suspicious or they all over the place?
Yeah, it could be anything, you know. Uh, is, for instance, today a gentleman, uh, approached a lady at the Green Mountain Plaza that we've never seen before. Think he's got some mental health issues, wants, way too friendly with the, with the ladies, makes him very nervous. Uh, came to, actually our first customer came to the station today, so she made the complaint, was concerned about her vehicle. Gave us a heads up on this gentleman bothering her. Things like that. Much suspicious. Usually concerns of the people, it's odd or behavior or whatever.
Hey, anything else from the chief?
I don't think I have, I've probably forgotten something, but.
Really? Anything else for the chief? Any questions?
Do you like my grinders?
Yeah, the fair and partial policing policy, did you guys?
Okay.
This is the state one.
Yeah.
And we haven't received the comment from our visitor from, uh.
Actually, I'm having coffee with her tomorrow, so we'll see what progress.
Switch into the Burlington Police Department.
Yeah, and they're, they're in a different, their charter, so, yeah.
So Burlington, Burlington has a lot of problems up there. They have their fair and partial police policy, we have ours down here and we're not Burlington. I could say so much more, but I won't.
Oh, that's probably just as well.
I, I mean, as far as the commenter goes. Some specifics will be helpful if there's a particular thing that she thinks, I mean, I don't know if she was even familiar with that this existed, so.
Well, this does say it's for internal use only and does not enlarge an employee's civil liability in any way. I mean, that. Um, did we adopt it or did you folks somehow just?
We were mandated by the state to either make up our own or adopt.
Okay.
So we were mandated by the state, our legislature has mandated that instead of passing the laws, they, they have, uh. Allowed us to do policies. Policies can be changed a lot quicker than laws. So therefore we have these policies that the state is, uh, given to law enforcement throughout the state that we have to follow. Either we, either we follow their policy, we can prob, we can probably be more strict, but we can be less strict than their policies.
But the select board didn't adopt this. Did we?
No, you did not.
Yeah.
Doesn't, let's put it this way, I didn't have a choice. I have to adopt it.
Um, I'm curious to know, okay, here it is, this is backside. The fair and impartial policing policy was approved by the Vermont Criminal Justice Training Council, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. And then there's a.
Our PD.
Is subject to it.
Right, right.
Okay.
I don't think we get a choice. So if you're gonna have a police department, you're gonna be, you, this is what you go by.
Yes.
Minimum. If you wanna go more than this.
Like Burlington, yes.
You can, but this is the minimum standard.
Right.
And so you, you basically took, you just put Rutland Town Police Department wherever something else was.
Right.
Okay.
This is one of those cases, Mary, where we looked for something we needed and we found something that fit already done.
Oh, yeah.
And we didn't have to.
Yeah.
Do that. And this meets the requirement of the, um, Vermont Council on Criminal Justice.
Yeah. I'm debating whether we should stick it in our policy book, but note that it was not adopted by the select board. Um, it was.
I don't know how that works.
I don't either. I have no clue. Yeah.
So maybe that's a Kevin question, maybe the board, maybe, maybe the board should.
I can.
Adopt this policy.
Or not.
Concern of this policy goes against federal law, so that's concern of the police office. That's just one concern. If I don't comply, then I can get decertified, leave my men the wrong way, so I.
Alright.
Like handcuffed and we, we do what the state wants.
Or the board ratifies it in conjunction with the.
Well, let's, let me ask, it's a Kevin question.
And maybe we don't have to do anything.
Yeah.
I mean, Jim.
We're gonna be hearing about this again, I.
I'm sure we will.
Due to some of the provisions that are in here, I'm pretty sure, so I suggest we all read it.
Okay.
Have you adopted the other ones they have also? Have you adopted the other ones they have also?
What are the ones talking about?
On the.
Use of force, yes.
Okay. Force used to be like nine pages, now it's like thirty. I think they had like seven different ones on there.
Ones that are mandated, we we've adopted.
Okay.
I wonder if we should like. At least for our police committee, have a.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have a binder of those ones that are mandated.
Add. The specific ones they have. To only your binders if you'd like.
Well. Let's start with pulling them all together and we'll have a meet, meeting of the police committee, which we need to do anyway. And then in the meantime, we'll ask Kevin. Is any part of our police department? Funded with any federal grants that might be in jeopardy? My guess is no. Yeah, okay.
We had the uh SRO, yes, or if we want to say we want to get another officer on the street. Then that would be.
Okay. All right, but we're not there.
I think Vermont might have a hard time getting this point.
Oh.
That, that's how we started with the school resource officer.
That's right.
With the grant.
It was a large grant, then a decrease.
Trickle down and then once the grant was gone.
We had to have.
We absorbed the cost between us and the school.
Correct.
We applied for that grant to the school.
Teddy applied for it.
Type, so Teddy applied for that. I had a, I had a. Person talking to me today, um, wanted to know why we have a school resource officer. And and I, my, my honest answer was that in this day and age, I can't imagine not. With what's going on, but.
Uh, we didn't have one, I got several phone calls, when are we getting one?
Yes.
Um, I just didn't know, is there anything that mandates a community to have a school to have one, or are we just being proactive?
We're being proactive.
Okay.
Protecting our, probably our. Our most treasured assets.
Yep.
I mean. Having an individual in that building. Should make most. Well, you know, most people think twice.
Yeah.
I think, I think there is a certain level of fear that goes.
With that police car out front.
That helps too.
That certainly helps with the police car out front.
But I mean, you know, I'm just saying, it it was kind of an interesting question as to why we do and I. And to me, it's like a no brainer, it's like I couldn't, I couldn't come up with a good answer other than. Um, it's in this day and age of what's going on, I think a town would be foolish not to have somebody in a building.
The gentleman who was gonna shoot up the uh. School over in Fairhaven. Was more concerned about. The officer on duty there. Cause he knew that was gonna be a problem, that officer, that's why he didn't quite dare to do it, because that gentleman was in that building. So.
The deterrent we'll never know about. Okay, anything else for it? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, now micros. Nope, not available. Uh, Larry is not.
Good?
Uh. Marcia Chaffey. Town head lister. And we had something in here for Marcia. Is Marcia on?
I'm here.
Hi, Marcia.
Hi, good evening. Um. Let me see what's going on, uh. Kathy and I finished stuffing our envelopes today, two hundred and. Thirty-four of them. For our business personal property and we'll take those out to the post office tomorrow. So that's, that's done. Uh, we didn't get a um slightly marked up. Um. Proposal that we sent to uh to Christie for her to look over for the reappraisal uh purposes, nothing. Nothing major, so. We'll uh. We'll be getting on that to uh. Send out to um the proposals to different uh assessing firms. Um, and I, I do have a list of um. Of potential uh young people that are actually what they call junior assessors. That are in in training at the moment, I can get that, I I can give a, I'll give Bill a copy so that you can, you can look it over. They are from all over the state and also from uh New Hampshire as well. So, um. Other than that, um, same old, same old.
We have a couple of forms here that. I've not. Seen us have to deal with before. This is the um PVR three seventeen, which is Vermont Property Tax. Public pious or charitable exemption and apparently we're supposed to fill it out.
We, no. No, no, no.
Okay.
The pious uh, you know, the the churches and so forth, I've sent all those out. Uh, for this year, they have to send them back to us.
No, Marcia, this is the one you gave me for the public safety building.
That's what Bill, I didn't hear you.
It's what you gave me for the public safety building?
Oh, 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 yeah, that's it, yes, it's a, because the public safety building is tax exempt. Uh, we, we did put a value on it, but I think we're just waiting to get something from VLCT. So that we can put that in the file, compare. You know, the evaluation they come up with with what we've got.
So what do you want us to do with this form?
Well, I'll have to look it over again, I, that was, I did that to Bill quite a while ago, but um. Yeah, it's just to certify that the public safety building is tax exempt.
Well, if there's, and there's places to fill in our, describe our organization's mission. You know, stuff like that, so why don't we do this, why don't we hold it over until next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Bill, Bill can get together with you and you'll get input from League of Cities and Towns.
Sure.
I'd not seen anything like this before, and I know, for example, we have a, a town highway garage. And we have, you know, the, the cold storage building.
Right.
So I'm wondering why we're looking at this form for, for me the first time.
But for one thing, the state is clamping down even more, I mean. Now we're mandated to send out um buyer and seller. Certification letters and um it just, it it. It's been great, we're, the turnaround time for both buyers and sellers has been great, we've got uh. Quite a few being returned as the PTTRs come in.
Okay.
So there are other, other things that are happening, um. Our, our uh. VTPI. Is becoming a huge, huge headache. Um, the migration between Nimerick and VTPI is not working like it should be. And we were told, we had a uh homestead. Uh, refresh, of course, on Monday. And we were told at that time that we will not even be getting current use until probably mid to late March. And we've got the Thomas property that has. He filed to withdraw the fifty point four seven acres of land on. Seven North. And Krista called me, I, I said, I, I, it's out of my hands, there's nothing I can do about it.
To withdraw from current use?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so actually there were two forms, the other is the insurance replacement cost of tax exempt property reporting form. So why don't we hold on both of those and we'll take a look at them at the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay, it's Marcia. Oh, there's our E nine one one address, two seven two McKinley Avenue.
It didn't change.
No. Still.
It's just that we didn't put it on the building.
Well, we, we ought to and set a good example, yeah. Okay, any questions for Marcia? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alrighty, thanks.
All right, next, Chris Clark.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Chris.
Uh, kinda what Ed said, we've been moving into the new fire station. Uh, the last week. Um. Got all the trucks in there, everything's in there, we're just trying to find a home for everything and. Hanging stuff up, but we're making progress. Um, I did call Gary the other day. Uh, one of my members was in there and said there, he thought their roof was leaking. Which. Gary did come and look, um. I haven't heard back from him yet, but I'm assuming since I haven't, it's probably nothing. Um. That's it about the station, really, it's. It's wonderful so far, so no complaints.
Thanks, well. Dude, I mean, we, you probably heard us talking to Ed, as you find things, including the, you know. Roof leak question, pass them on to Joey and. Where, mention them at meetings and we're gonna just start. Trying to capture all of these things as best we can in minutes and also with Joey, so we double check. As you find things, let Joey know or bring it up at the select board meeting or both, so we, we have a decent punch list.
Yep, we will do that, we're uh. We're starting to make our lists, Dell and I were there today and uh. Got a couple of small things, but nothing major so far, so, but we'll let Joe know.
Good, thank you very much. And thanks for, thanks to the um fire department for all of their move in work, we appreciate it, I drove by. Saturday morning on my way to the transfer station and it was really nice to see the trucks in there.
It's uh. It's great, not that Dave's garage wasn't, but it's. Home, so. Um. I did take care of paying the. McGovern for our fire pickup, they came last Monday and put the new rack on, so that's all squared away.
Good.
Um. I think that's all I really got.
Okay, questions, Joe?
Yep, so Chris, the um, who is coordinating with CVC? To get your communications up and running, are you, are you handling that? Or Larry?
Uh, no, last time I talked to Gary and I, this was. Probably a week ago, actually. I asked him. If the antennas were up there and he said, nope. Um. They were supposed to be ordered. Like the sprinkler pump when the station first got approved and. Nobody ordered them. So CVC is waiting to, I guess somebody finally did, but they're not in yet, so. From what Gary told me, the conduit is run down the hose tower. On our side.
Right.
And the pipes just stick into the police side and that's it, so whoever's. Finishing that work is gonna have to. Run pipe and wires through the ceilings over on the police side, from. What I've been told. But uh, they were supposed to be put up there. Months and months ago, but uh. I guess they didn't get. Purchased.
Okay, all right, so, so somebody is on top, I just didn't know if you wanted me to do that, but if you guys are. On top of that, then I won't get in the middle of it.
I know they're ordered, they just haven't come in yet, but.
Okay. Cause I know there was talk.
Time ago.
Yeah, there was talk about this um way back in the. Actually, before the ceiling tiles and stuff were up, cause you know, when I talked with Gary, he said he's. Concerned about a lot of stuff that's gonna have to be taken down, so they can run cables and then put back up and. They were worried about, you know, damage to ceiling tiles and stuff and um, they were hoping that that stuff would have all been done. Prior to the finish work, so. Um, we'll just have, because they did have a man lift there, which would make installing those antennas, so I guess that's gonna be up to CVC. Um, I'm not a big fan of them putting ladders on the roof to access the tower. So.
No.
Have to be on top of that, yeah. Um, we'll, we'll need to be, you know, they'll need to be aware of that and once they come in here, um. There may be access to a man lift, if if they guess they need it, they might be able to rent it, I know that um. Magic brush painting has a man lift and um, see uh VMS had rented it, so. Um, just something to keep, be aware of, okay?
Yep, all right.
Yep. And you know, if you do develop a list of things, you know, you can kinda coordinate with Ted and Ed. Your lists and and have them and then we can present those to VMS for stuff that. Um. You know, that are shortcomings or something that's missed in the, what was supposed to be in the building, the things we missed, those are on us.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay.
No, there's only one thing I can think of that we missed, but. You already know about it, so.
Yep, yeah.
Um, any questions for the fire chief? Nope. I think that's it, thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you, and uh Carrie is homesick, so she's probably not gonna talk tonight, so.
Yeah, tell her to feel better soon.
I will, thank you.
Thanks. All right, uh, Mike Delahanty, First Constable. Uh, John Paul Fignant. Health Officer, Second Constable. Nope. Barbara Nois pulling is not, cause she had another meeting. Joe D'Nardo, Public Safety Building Clerk, we've been covering stuff.
Yeah, I don't think I have anymore, I'll just keep on top of the lists and what they're doing and uh. You know, we'll try to get everything square, I'm not real familiar how this tail end process works, but we'll get through it.
Okay.
Um, I do know there were some submissions. From Ed Clark, but I haven't seen them yet. For their, their, the substantial completion payments.
Okay.
And that stuff was forwarded, I think, to Carrie, she has copies of everything. Um, so it's, I'm, I know VMS is gonna want their final payment and whatever, so. I, I think that we still need to talk to them regarding. The delays in getting in.
Mm-hmm.
And whether that has a monetary value to us.
Mm-hmm.
Same as the delays that were caused. At the beginning of construction that had a monetary value to them that we paid.
Right.
Um, I do know that the um. This whole sprinkler. Glitch. From the wrong pump or not the right pump, um, you know, I've talked to those guys from VMS and they're as dumbfounded as that. That, that's not like they're reinventing what needed to be there and why this is such a problem, um. And the fact that the controls. For the sprinkler pump are not the right controls. That were, that were specified in the electrical drive.
So that's between VMS and their.
I do believe that's between VMS and their subs and we should not pay. Out the, any total amount, I mean, if they need a part of the retainage. Maybe okay, but not, we need to have some leverage.
Retainage.
Because, um. I talked with the electrical engineer and the wiring and everything was designed that the transfer switch for that pump. Was supposed to be. In the electrical controls. And the controls they put in, now one of the problems, and and Sean from VMS is working on this with them, one of the issues that has come up. Is that. I guess the right controls. May or may not fit in the area allotted, so they may have to work in, it's, it's. They kinda messed up here.
Yeah.
And I don't know, and I, and I, I would say this is all on the sub.
I agree, or it's, it's on VMS.
Well, it's on VMS and and they're gonna have to work it out with the subs, but um, to have that. Eliminated and not be part of it, you know, the electrician, he said, they ran the wires there and then there was nothing to hook them to. So everything, everything's in place except for the controls, so um, I haven't heard anything from Sean, he hasn't got back to me, so. I'm hoping that by the time they get the right sprinkler pump. That we'll have this other portion um. Taken care of and and we can move forward.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep.
Um. Bill Sweet, Town Administrator.
Evening.
Good evening.[1760.04]
All right.
Oh, before Ed leaves. We do have a liquor license and I know Carrie is the one who usually presents, so. Let me. Move with that. Um, this is for. Ninety-nine Restaurants of Vermont LLC, um. This is an outside consumption permit. A third-class restaurant bar license and a first-class restaurant bar license. And looking at the chief, no problems. Is there a motion?
Move to.
Show move. Motion is made and seconded to approve any discussion. I will note that the Chief of Police indicates there's no problem with them. Um, all in favor of issuing the three licenses to ninety-nine, please say aye. Okay, motion carries four zero and we all get to sign this. Okay. Just one thing on my. List, we got a bunch of others still.
We do have some things left, yes. Not, not too bad, but we have some, a few things left. In your packet, uh, uh, part two. Is follow-up from the last meeting where our, for our code of ethics. Uh, so there is a draft, there was a model policy, uh, that, that emerged and.
Oh, sorry.
That, what, what you have there is the. Policy updated to be town-specific for us. So I gave you a copy of what it looks like. For us and then a copy of what the original. Model was, but it's just basically inserting. Appropriate titles and names in the various places. Uh, so it outlines. What we do, how we handle it, who does what, um. It's. Pretty, pretty straightforward. Uh, this goes along with the. Uh, code, uh, code of ethics training. Um, so we need to identify and get everybody in on that. So it does say here who qualifies as a municipal officer. Um, and it's a pretty comprehensive list, so.
Yeah, the one thing it didn't have, but we had in the last packet was the actual statute on it, which defines some of the words that they use. In these two things, so the whole thing should be put together.
So on our, on our website, we do have a copy of the statute on the website. Um, but the, the, yes, the, the statute, if you'd like, can certainly go along. On the back of the policy.
It has to, yeah.
Essentially, Paris, the statute does not, meaning this is basically almost verbatim what the statute says we have to do.
So I took, so there was, they, they had provided a model policy. Which I gave you, which I gave you there and I just filled it in for. Where it says like, name municipality, I, I filled it in. So nothing, nothing changed other than what. What we've already decided on, so.
For example, they don't define what a conflict of interest is, except in the statute. Seem to be an omission. Um, so what's your pleasure here, folks? We've got a policy, we've got. An ordinance and we've got the statute.
So they, they, they have it listed as an ordinance and they said it can be called an ordinance, it can be called a policy, like it kinda depends upon. The, the. What the municipality wanted to do.
So if we do a policy, we can adopt it right now, just us, and we can change it more readily. If things come up and it's what we've done with a number of things. If we do it as an ordinance, then we have to go through the ordinance process, which is a little more extensive. Um, posting it and seeing if anybody comments on it within with thirty days, I think, um, and so. Little different, how.
Only affects. The towns. Employees. And the town, I would go with a policy rather than ordinance. I think this governs us. This is the policy that we're going to abide by as board members, clerk, treasurer, highway crew, police officers. Um, they all have a stake in it.
I would agree. Anyone wanna go the other route?
So, yeah, I mean, my understanding on this was basically the state said, here's the law that everybody needs to follow. I noticed at the end of this policy, and well, to Mary's point, I'm not sure. Cause I'm skimming back through this again. I'm not even sure it talks about conflicts, cuz I think you just have to refer to the statute for what. Problems are, and this is just telling people how we're gonna deal with them when they're reported. Then I noticed at the end it says other laws. This policy is in addition to. Uh, other policy than this municipality and all applicable laws of the state of Vermont, but. But this was, I don't know. I guess this is just a complaint procedure, probably wasn't specified in the policy, so, I mean, of the, uh, in the statutes. I don't know, it looked fine to me. At some point you also give us a form. I don't know what I did with that, but I thought that looked fine as well.
So there is a complaint form and I. I have it largely drafted, but I want, if you made any changes to this, it may have changed that form. So if you are, if we're good with this, there is a copy in the green folder with. Real dates on it. Um, for everybody to sign, so. Uh, if you, if you're good with this as being a policy and you want to adopt it, then I will finalize the actual form itself.
I'd move to adopt this. Town of Rutland Code of Ethics Investigation Enforcement Policy.
Yeah, good. Motion's made and seconded to adopt.
Wouldn't find anything.
Who did we make as? A municipal. The enforcement officer. Do we designate you last?
I, I'm the representative.
Right, okay.
Basically, yes. And then if, if there is a complaint.
You're the designated complaint recipient?
That's me.
Okay, or select board chair if you're the person complained against. Alright. Gotcha. Um, so motion's been made and seconded to adopt. Are you gonna do a version for, or shall we just circulate this tonight and you can take the signature page?
Did you take the, did you get that from the green folder?
Oh geez, bro.
The green folder copy.
Green folder has one that has real dates in it.
Yeah, I have too many. I've got the ones with.
If, if you want to sign the back, if you just find one, you want to sign the back page.
There we go.
Fill in the dates, yeah, but there was one.
Number six.
It's two on mine.
Okay, so all in favor of adopting the policy, please say aye. Aye, motion carries four zero.
We'll add this to our binders.
It will be added to, it'll be added to everybody's binders.
Please add the.
Along the back page, yep, absolutely. Uh, so. The ethics training, we, there, there, it's not, it's. It's not hard, I mean.
No, it's not. We both did it and we got through it.
Yeah, we got, got through it. So it's, it's pretty good. So we will, we, we should schedule some time for people to, to do that. We could do it in here if we wanna do that and I'll, I'll, I'll work with. I'll work with everybody on the list to get them all up to speed and, uh.
So when we gotta do that, there's some. Thing we have to fill out, uh.
So when, when you reach the end, there's a test. Will not pass the screen if you don't pass the test. Uh, and then once you do that, then it gives you this, a spot to fill in your information and it. Emails you the certificate completion or emails you basically the page that says you've completed it, so.
Now, that's the.
That's the proof that we passed it.
No, that's for. That's not the open meeting law, which is a different one.
This is the ethics one, right, so.
At that point, the state has it or do we have to then send that thing?
What I did was I sent it to Bill, cuz there's a place that says. Who do you want this sent to? So I sent it to Bill to show that we'd completed.
And I, I, I save a copy of that, so I have a, I have a folder that. Has, that will keep those in, so we have record of that. Um, so that's, yeah, that's no problem. So I will, I will. Work with a, a, all the people affected by this to make sure we all get, we all get there, um. The open meeting law video is, is very good, um, about forty-five minutes. And, uh, it's not quite as extensive as a list of people that have to be on it, but it does. It talks about the open meeting law, what the requirements are, and there are some things. That I, I, I came across that we probably need to do better on, but, um.
We can make you the resident authority on this also.
Outstanding.
So the thing that I think I've always struggled with is this. Uh, the definition of, I guess it's the definition of municipal body and whether our committees count. Which, I think, well, and then there's two different concepts, I guess, that we mean, should not get confused, which. Being the more recent rules on. Public access, but. If we have a committee of two. People that don't have decision-making authority, we're still governed. Because we're a subcommittee.
So there's, there's advisory bodies and non-advisory bodies?
I know, but then that's the, that's this. Separate issue, really.
We have historically always warned every committee meeting. Uh, uh, with, with the same level of, of access. In case a third board member shows up. And the three wants to decide, we're taking action on this, it, it can be, it's a, it's a properly warned meeting and action can be taken. So if we only, if we don't warn the meeting and three show up, you can't do anything. So is that, is that what you mean?
Something you're in violation.
Well, I mean, I guess the issue that we have to keep in mind is that if a two-person committee is subject to the rule, then. Two people can't discuss committee business unless you're. In a warrant.
But you don't have a quorum, so you, 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 you can discuss town business?
Well, that's the thing that's unclear to me. If you're a two-person subcommittee. Is that a quorum, isn't that?
I, I think in a short forty-five minute video, you can learn a lot about what we.
I watched the thirty, it's a thirty-seven minute video. You shouldn't oversell it because that may deter people from watching it.
Yep.
Two of us.
It wasn't clear to me.
So the committees are two people. So realistically, those two board members cannot. Take any action.
Correct.
And I've always thought that. The procedure we go through might be overkill, but in the long run. Because it's only, it's not a big deal to warn the meetings, make it known, and what it does is it does protect the town because if, if. There's an issue on. Police or fire or recreation and one of us that's not, wants to come in and put to our two cents in, realistically, we have three people. Who could. Make a motion and vote on something, even I do believe.
Yes.
So if it had to be, you know, so I think we're protecting the town by doing it the way we're doing it. So it's a little bit, you know, I always. Was, you know, my years in the fire department, at one time we had. I think four or five, at, at one point there was at least three and maybe four board members that were fire. And on a monthly meeting night, those four members were all in the same room, the same together, and that's not a warrant. Now, it wasn't a town meeting, but. The four of them. Could actually conduct town business.
Well.
If it was, if it was a warranted meeting, they could.
Or they would be, so it was always like being on pins and needles when everybody was there together, you know, because.
Like we can go to each other's funerals, right?
Yes, right.
That's one less in the quorum.
And we're not triggering anything.
No, but, but it, it gives a, uh, an impression of impropriety when you have four board members together. At a function, in a meeting, people that are. Skeptical of the, um. Uh, credibility of your board or whatever you could, they could raise a stink about stuff. Well, I saw those two or three of them over there standing in a corner. What were they talking about, you know?
Telling dirty jokes.
I'm, I'm not sure either, Matt, but I, I'm okay with us just warning every committee meeting and.
I think we should. The question that they didn't, but they don't in the video answered the other flip side of that coin, which is. Two selectmen walk into a bar. They happen to be on the same committee, you know?
There, there's no, there, there, it, so if. There's no prohibition about board members being at social events, social functions, like. Rotary, for example, like that's, there's no prohibition against that because it's, it's not, it's not intended for town business. So if Joe and Sharon show up, it's like you four could be in the same room. You just, you can't talk about town business. That's, that's the only prohibition. That's, that's.
I mean, I do believe you warned. The, one of the functions at the fire station, right?
Yes.
Because we were, most of us were gonna be there.
Yes.
And that can be perceived as a board meeting.
There's no consequence to putting out a warning, like.
There's a lot more consequence to not doing it. I mean, it's, it's. And you know, Darren, well, if we're all in the same building.
Well, we're letting people know what we're doing and the minutes also let people know what we're doing and it's frankly a blueprint for what. The select board needs to work on. We just go down through the minutes.
There's, there's no way you can have two or three board members in the same room. And not talk about town business.
It's really hard.
It's, it's never gonna happen because this is what you're doing. And something that.
Did we talk about anything at the? At the public service building cuz there's.
We talked about the building. So to have that, to have that worn. Covers the town's. Why responsibility that, you know, in that. Once it's warned, actually that's kinda makes it open to the public.
It does.
If they wanna come and.
So that, and that's the other part of it too. Once you warn the meeting, then, then there are things that are triggered by that. Yeah, there are, there are other, other requirements.
But, but, but you're, it's always. To be more cautious is always better.
And, and I'm good with all of that. So watch the video. And as one fellow select board member from. Ibra, I think, said he watched it. Weeks ago and he said, you know what? It basically. Told me that we were doing things pretty well. So I think you'll get the same flavor when you watch it.
I didn't have, I, I, I mean, when I watched it, I wasn't like, oh, like there wasn't that, there's no big, there's no issue, so. Really, I think.
We're good.
Yeah, I think for, yep.
All right, what's next?
What's next? Uh. Next in your packet, uh, under the. Three for the public safety building is the, um, builder's risk. Policy cancellation request. The league has acknowledged we are in the building and that our coverage with them has started. Um, we are still paying the building under construction insurance policy. So the sooner we cancel that, the sooner we stop.
Is there anything in the contract? We signed with VMS that relates to when we terminate that? Does anybody know?
Yeah, the only thing, when we.
We ran it by Kevin.
I know that we had to have it.
Yes.
But is there anything in there that talks about canceling it?
I don't know. Kevin's only comment was. To ensure that the effective date of cancellation lined up with the effective date of coverage, so there was no gap and there's, there's no gap.
Because there is some work to be done yet, um, but it's mostly external work.
But the, right, well, the, the league is, has now assumed coverage for the building.
Right, but I've just seen in the parking lot and stuff, um, but. I guess if any damage is done and, and if Fabian's gonna do the finished work, then. They would be, I think that the disinsurance was to cover a loss of the building, more than anything.
If Fabian backs into a door, then Fabian's replacing the door, like that's, yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, so cancellation, we did run this by town council, um, cancellation request, policy release. It looks like complete signature section below.
It's in the middle.
Yeah, there's. Looks like there's space for two. Three, four, hey.
Well, there's.
We could all sign, couldn't we?
Good, yes. There's witnesses, there's, there's signatures and witnesses.
I think we should all sign if we're so inclined, huh?
I guess that makes sense. You wouldn't wanna.
Is there a motion?
Motion to sign? I'll move to sign.
To, you know, do the cancellation request. That's okay. Second, motion's made and seconded, discussion.
So it says signature of named insured.
That's us.
That's us, an authorized signature, not apt, so who's the authorized?
One, one of those sections to the left of that. If you were a lien holder, mortgagie, loss payee, like, that's none of, that's none of us.
I'm printing for town of Rutland, okay?
Perfect.
And then there's signature of named insureds.
I think that we need to authorize Mary to sign.
No, I think we can all sign it.
But where?
There's one, two, three, four lines on the right-hand side. Okay, and then Chief Dumas can sign as a witness and Bill can sign as a witness. How's that? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Uh, while you were signing that, uh, the league, the LCT has sent out, uh, their twenty-twenty-five safety grant. Is now available. Um, we have done a large number of projects with this grant. Uh, it is up to, uh, six thousand dollar award, so it's fifty percent match, so we could spend twelve to get six back, so. Um, it's open to all the departments and, and all sorts of stuff is on the list like before, um.
What was it we were asking that was on the list we were gonna try to get?
The one that doesn't do the crosswalk.
This one does not do the crosswalk. It does do the. Uh, the flammable big yellow cabinet that we do not have at the building yet. That's one that's supposed to be vented outside.
Oh, I don't know. So the red one we got isn't.
Right, the red one we got is, so there's, there's different colors for different things. The red one's for like paints and things like that and the yellow one's supposed to be for flammable liquids. So that was in the, in there, but. I'm, if I recall, the conversation that Gary had with Dell, that Dell told me. Was that they didn't put a vent in because they didn't know where the cabinet was going, so that's still, I believe, a pending project. Okay, so if that yellow cabinet gets put in. So if that yellow cabinet gets put in, there's supposed to be a vent to go outside.
Any idea where that would go?
No.
Would there be room in the compressor room? I don't know how big the S C B A compressor is.
I, I would, well, we Dell had a, Dell had a quote on one, but I don't, I don't know.
Only reason I say that's on an outside wall.
It is.
And it could be vented.
The the, the small, the, the, the utility compressors in there, in, in the best corner for that to go in. So that's not going to go anywhere.
Right.
Um, the other wall, you can't put it on because it's got an access panel for controls for, for the heated floor. Can't go on that wall. Um. It.
So we could get the, we could get the cabinet.
We, that, that is, that is one of the things that qualifies under the grant, whether we want to use that for that, I, that's, that's fine.
Well, if, if it's something we want in the building and we were planning on, then we should get, we should apply for the grant. And with the fire department would apply for the grant, right? Or would it be as a town?
It would.
Either or, it doesn't matter. And then we'll have to figure out the best suitable location. Cause it, cause it, to be right, it should be on an outside wall.
It would probably be most effective on outside wall, but there, I, I don't know much more about it than that. Like, I don't know, are we supposed to have one that has a fan or is it supposed to have a fan attached to the vent? Like I, I don't, I don't know. So that'd be a excellent question to ask Dell. So he would probably be.
Challenge him with that.
Yep, that's a great, great thing for him to take on.
He'll come and talk.
Uh. Alright, and let's see.
If we need it, we might as well get a grant for it.
We can try. Uh, and last thing on your desk, uh, while I was, um, finding the ethics policy, um, it also referenced one that we don't have, which I put on your desk, uh, which is a public records inspection, copying and transmission pulse. Um. Yep, so.
There's four parts to.
There are, there are a few parts to it. Yep. Um, so this one, this one does have some sections you would need to make some decisions on, and those are highlighted farther into it. Um, and then I did give the V L C T guidance on it. Uh, and then there's two forms that go along with this. One is the public requesting a copy of a record and the other is if there is a reason for denial, there's a specific form we have to have. So those are all drafts. I don't, I wouldn't expect you'd want to take action on this tonight since you're just seeing it for the very first time, but, um.
Those are a schedule on that.
Okay, there, there is a section in there about, about having to pay for, for copies. So I believe this would actually fall, your police reports would fall underneath this as well. So, um, it, but it standardizes across the board. So if people need police report, a fire report, you know, anything like that, like it would all.
These are, these are different public records than, um, how we can access online, right?
Yes.
This is, this is for things like police and fire reports. Okay.
Yep. So it does go over here in the purpose and what applies to. Does.
Some more reading.
More reading, yeah. So.
Soon as you get done the personnel policy, you can read this.
Yeah, that's next. Personnel policy is next.
You know, I did notice in that ethics policy we just did, it references your personnel policy. And I was thinking, oh, we got one now.
Yep.
Almost.
So this, this unfortunately it's much larger than the ethics one with this. Um. But it would be helpful to have that so that way that, you know.
So if you could stick this on the agenda for.
And we can take these home and read them.
Yes, we can.
Absolutely.
Um, the next meeting should be the personnel policy. Then the meeting after, unless you want to do two of these, but this doesn't look too bad.
It's not, it's not complicated. There, there's some, I did highlight some sections that
Yeah.
you need to decide on, on that. And it really wasn't a.
Let's put this on the next.
No problem.
Agenda to them. Okay, good.
And let's see, I think that's everything I have. So the, the the police are ninety-nine and a half percent out of the room next door. So that we can, we can talk to the building committee about what they'd like to do. Um, and I think that's, uh.
There are about four different groups who have their eye on that building. So, or that room.
But there are.
Five?
First, there's a personnel committee in office to, uh, to.
So does the town administrator get first dibs on it?
Uh, no, there's no such thing as first dibs. Um, that's kind of up to the building committee to find out who wants to do what and then solicit ideas and figure out what comes next. So and then make a recommendation to the board with a price tag.
Shouldn't be, well, it might be.
It'll be a good price.
Yeah.
Well, probably gonna need a new carpet.
Carpet.
Yep.
Carpet would be good. Yeah.
That'll be after the safe is gone.
Yes.
Oh, that's not out of there yet?
Not yet, but soon.
That's a pretty groggy haircut.
It's.
Yeah. You guys.
Doesn't it require moving the door to get it out?
Nope, it's out.
Just a strong back.
What's that?
Just a strong back.
Okay. It's in the middle of the floor. So hopefully the fork can hold it because it's in the middle of the floor now.
You could put down some plywood to disperse the loads if you put it on a dolly. Yeah, huh?
Yeah.
Put it on a dolly, put some half inch plywood or something down to disperse it as you go.
They got a plan.
Yep, you got a plan.
Yeah.
Open the window.
They do, yeah, open the window. I love the, the old windows maybe, but not the new, not the new ones.
So I'm handing you the mailbox damage.
Oh.
Email that I received. So I don't forget.
Alright.
Okay, um, anything else?
Everything I have.
Okay.
And the policy is in here, right?
Policy's number two.
It is.
Alright, so that'll go home with me.
So we have gone through the amendment, select board request, and we're moving forward with that with Joe as our point person. We have submitted the local hazard mitigation plan for approval from the state.
Approval pending adoption.
Pending adoption. We have reviewed the draft code of ethics investigation and enforcement policy and taking care of that. We've received a public safety building update. Uh, we've approved the town road and bridge standards and town highway annual financial plan saying we spend more than three hundred dollars a mile. Are there any new items?
Hey, Josh has made it this long. We should appoint him to one of our vacant jobs.
We got some. What, what would you like?
It's here to observe.
Okay.
Okay. I, I still have not received any letters of interest for the planning commission or the, the regional planning commission board of commissioners or our planning commissioner. So we have, we haven't received anything yet.
Interest?
In?
Planning commission, regional planning commission?
It was transportation council.
Pardon?
Call me and we'll have a coffee.
Alright, alright.
Um, the, the only, the other thing I, I wanted to bring up is, um, uh, we, we off, obviously offer notary services here. Um, we don't, we don't really have any published like set of guidelines or anything like that. Is there anything that we would, we should do or want to do, um, other than saying we offer it and we will follow the state guidelines, but it'd be, you know, it's, it's one of those things like we do it, but we don't really have a policy or procedure for doing it.
I mean, I think you follow the state guidelines. So this, there's statutory stuff on it. Um, Matt and I are not good people to call on because we're exempt from, as attorneys.
Yeah, we, we just, we just renewed ours.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, we renewed, I mean, I renewed mine, but you know, the, the guidelines, we don't have to abide by, isn't that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that what it comes down to, if you or Carrie are doing it, then you know, that's professional practice. Basically you're going to follow.
So there, there have been some issues lately with, with people going to banks and other places that are saying they're sovereign citizens. We haven't had any issues here yet. But, and they are refusing to provide any identification and.
But they want things notarized.
But they want things notarized. And when they are being denied, they're, it's becoming an issue.
You're a sovereign citizen. Why would you acknowledge the validity of the notarization anyways?
Excellent question.
Well, when the next one comes, you can ask him and see how it goes. I'll, I'll, I'll refer to your office. Around when you ask.
So would it be in our best interest to have a policy?
Number.
To, if you deny somebody doing it.
We, a, as a notary, you, you can deny it. Like you can just.
Yeah, if they don't have the necessary documentation to allow you to verify their identity, you can deny.
And it, the, it's, we, we had, I had five people today come in to get something notarized. That's more than I usually do in a month. But it, it, you know, that.
Must have been a deadline for something.
It, it's all sorts of random stuff. I, I, I met her today. She's a wonderful lady. She thinks it's going to notarize. So uh, but we, we do, we do all sorts of stuff and, and you know, what it is doesn't really, doesn't really have any material impacts, just the signature itself, but it's something that's been coming up in other places. Like we haven't had any issues here with it at all, but it's one of those, it's just probably a matter of time before, if they keep getting denied, other places is an inevitability. So, um, you know, I was thinking of like, if we just post a notice, like the service is available, however, you know, we, we must meet, oh, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Rules, so.
Have to.
But, but do we, did we, I didn't want to, if we wanted to, I did look and I couldn't find anybody that had like an actual policy on it, but.
I, it, it's state statute.
Yeah, state statute. So it's.
Follow what your training tells you to. And if they don't meet the requirements, you don't notarize.
Okay, so we'll, we'll.
Notary service.
We'll put up a notice.
So we don't have to, we don't have to make it available.
Correct.
Yeah, um, so.
It is a convenience, not a requirement.
That's right.
Yes.
Okay, um, that was new item. No other new items. Alright. Uh, update on committee meetings and select board project list. There it is. We're making progress. Um, and we heard the public safety building is the biggie and we're almost there. We get to soon cross it off.[1756.23]